Notice that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Trustees of the Village of New Paltz on August 14, 2013 at 7:35 PM. The public hearing is regarding the adoption of a local law regarding the installation of stop signs to the Bontecue residential subdivision.
Basically, it's a number of stop signs which should have been in the Bontecue residential area, which is at the top of Bontecue, it's mainly Pine Street, Cooper Street, Taylor Street, and that's pretty much it. So I don't know if there's anyone here to speak to the local law?
I'll move to close the hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have three minutes before we can start this.
Yes. Isn't this fun?
Second hearing?
Two minutes. Seven forty.
Stop signs are good? Excellent. Good to hear.
Thanks for having us.
We needed that.
Stop signs, good.
Two more minutes.
Give me time to turn my phone on.
We've got lots of gossip together, won't we?
Do we need to stop suddenly or do we stop later? I mean, has it been a vibrant debate?
Not so much. Not that vibrant. Pretty straightforward on this one.
One more minute.
What are you waiting for?
We set the time of the public hearing.
Five. So we have to, we can't have the second one twice at seven forty, yes.
Oh, three minutes in counting.
One minute. We're going by my essential.
So basically, for anyone who doesn't, is not familiar with the whole public hearing issue, we set a hearing on specific items and we're not allowed to start the hearing before the allotted time that it was set for. So in case Susan just came here for this particular law, I can't wait.
You could tell them in the background what we're doing.
Of course.
That way, no, they want to comment.
Yeah, it's basically just, we're putting in two handicap parking spots right outside of Chase Bank, which is as requested by the library, just to aid people who are handicapped who don't have to go up that really steep ramp to get into the library. This way, it's much more accessible.
It won't over on the block.
Okay. It'll apply to anybody who really, whether they're going to the library or not. I'd like to open the public hearing.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Trustees of the Village of New Paltz on August 14, 2013 at 7:40 PM. The public hearing is regarding the adoption of a local law amending the definitions in section 198 of the Code of the Village of New Paltz regarding disabled person parking.
Okay, now that you're all aware of the issue, any comment?
It's a very good idea.
Yeah, I betcha. All right. We like handicap parking and stop signs.
I'll move to close the hearing.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Across the street from the mall.
It's, yeah.
So it's basically flat.
Right outside of Chase Bank, so you can park right in front of Chase Bank and go directly to the library. Okay. I, okay, we'll go to the Pledge of Allegiance, approve the agenda, and then we will have the presentation from Dennis Larios, and then we will go into public comment. Hope everyone stands. Open the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are two items that I'm adding to the agenda. Pardon?
Three.
Three. Okay, you'll tell me the third when I get there. Okay. First of all, after item number 10, which is the discussion on short-term rentals, which we are not necessarily going to act that much on tonight because Mayor West had to leave town on a family emergency, but we are adding a memo from Kurt Lavalia for discussion regarding parking on Huguenot Street, which we will put right after that last item. We also have a fire department budget change, and I would like to request that I be authorized to sign a contract for new radios for the fire department, and that all has been added to our pocket this evening, and I think that will be the last item on our agenda.
Hopefully, two laws. The two laws we need to adopt, the stop sign and...
And actually, also, Village Treasurer Nancy Branko has asked the board to authorize her to bond for the approved permits already.
Yes. Do we want to add that to the consent agenda, or do we have to do some kind of role?
I think you have to do a roll call.
Okay.
I'm ninety percent sure you have to do. We'll do one for good measure.
Okay. We'll call that item number fifteen. That's it. And then, we can adopt these part of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Let's add the two public laws to the consent agenda, and let's go ahead and, I'd like to move to adopt the consent agenda. Did you have a question?
Yes. This, the short-term rental thing is going along with 105, but it is the rental registration that we want on the table. It was supposed to be on the agenda, but because Mayor West isn't here and it's his proposal.
Okay. So we'll keep that for discussion.
Yeah.
Do we want to add the fire department request to the consent agenda? Oh, okay, but that was also consent agenda?
Yeah, let's add that. You want to put that in consent?
Does anybody have an issue with doing that?
I have any questions.
Okay. So, yes, and just for information, the contract we had already approved at a prior meeting, the only reason why it's on the agenda tonight is because they needed budget modifications in order for it to pass, and also, we just need approval for the signature. So that's why it's a part of the consent agenda.
That's what I wanted to verify with the board, that that's putting the fire department issue on the consent agenda, you're authorizing Deputy Mayor Roßler to sign. Just wanted to make sure.
She wants that as a special resolution?
Nope.
And the bonding, may we add?
Yes.
No, we have to do a roll call.
We should roll.
I'm ninety percent sure.
I'll move consent agenda.
You already have.
All in favor?
Aye.
I wasn't sure.
Okay.
Good evening, I'm Dennis Larios, from General Arios. We've had the privilege of working for the village since 1956, particularly on your water and sewer systems and other village projects. I was asked to come tonight by the mayor to bring the village board and village residents up to date on the issues surrounding the potential shutdown of the Cascal Aqueduct in 2016 and 2017. I guess the first thing I would say is the meetings with the DEP concerning the aqueduct shutdown started in 2004, when the aqueduct shutdown was going to be planned for around 2011. And there were meetings with the DEP, the village, and the alternatives that were being discussed at that time was an interconnection with the Highland Water District or connection to the Delaware Aqueduct that are on the corners of Gardner. Those were the two major alternatives that were discussed at that time with respect to being able to furnish the village system with the 800 gallon a minute or so that it would need to sustain an aqueduct shutdown. A little history, the village system started about the turn of the prior century as far as the village ownership, but for years it involved the village, three small village reservoirs up on the mountain and a well field down near the Walk Hill River that is still village property but no longer functions as a well field. The Cascal Aqueduct has been used for the village for decades. In 1968, the village decided to make that its primary source of water and to modernize the aqueduct path and pump station, coordination facilities up on the mountain, and essentially retire the well field on Springtown Road. There were a lot of factors that went into that, but at the time, the Cascal Aqueduct water, of course, pursuant to the 1905 Water Supply Act that was passed by the state legislature, the city of New York is required to furnish water to communities in several counties in upstate New York, and Ulster County communities are included in that act. So, a decision was made by the village fathers back in the 1960s to move to almost completely the aqueduct supply and also use your mountain reservoirs when you could. Your mountain reservoirs have a very small tributary drainage area, only about 150 acres, so they, at times of the year, have no yield, and other times of the year, you may get 300,000 or 400,000 gallons a day out of those reservoirs. Your current usage ranges from 800,000 gallons a day to 1,001,000 gallons a day, and your major customers besides the village properties or the town districts, which use about 70,000 gallons a day, and the college, which uses, on average, about 130,000 gallons a day, but during times of the year, it's much higher than that, and during times of the year, it's much lower than that, obviously, depending on when school's in session.
Is that in addition to the 800,000?
No, that's included.
It's included.
So, you know, your use drops around 800,000 when college is out of session, your general rule, and goes up to 1,000,000, a little over 1,000,000 when college is in session. In, before, the surface water treatment rule, which is a federal and adopted by the state requiring all surface water supplies to be filtered, required the village to consider building a filter plant in the 1980s. Before they did that, they hired a hydrogeological firm from Portland, New York, to, you know, investigate well sources, and based on the results of those studies done in the mid-1980s, the village board decided to stay committed to the New York City supply as the primary supply and to build a filter plant. And the filter plant was completed in the late 1980s. In 2002, there was a direct agreement between the, I think the village, town, and DEP concerning the water contract for purchase of water from the city of New York, and that required, and I believe that agreement was signed, and I believe Blue has a copy of the signed agreement, the board double-checked that, DEP couldn't find it. But the, that agreement required the village to be able to sustain five-day shutdowns of the Cascal Aqueduct for duration of five days, with two days back on, five days off, two days on, three consecutive shutdowns. In response to that, the village played for brands and also had to modify its pump station at the aqueduct cap to be able to store five days of supply up on the mountain next to the reservoir, so that, or next to the water plant, so they reconstructed Reservoir Four, made it larger, built a new dam, and modified the pump station at the aqueduct cap so they could get five days of water up to the filter plant in two days' time. So all that work was completed in 1996, which brought you in compliance with the agreement, which the DEP can't seem to find a signed copy of.
You just said it was a 2002 contract, and then went back and said 1996, which is...
I'm sorry, there was a 1992 contract and a 2002 contract, I meant the 1992.
And you think Blue has a copy?
He said that today.
Is that, that's the one that the DEP can't find, is the 1992?
No, they can't find either.
They can't find either?
They didn't, no, that's correct.
And that's between the town, the DEP?
Correct, at least, that's...
That's what it's, that's what's listed.
We'll go on and for it, and just make notes.
Everybody needs a copy.
You know, the DEP, the city of New York is obligated to serve the town districts and the village system pursuant to the 1905 Water Supply Act, and with certain terms and conditions that are in those agreements. So, the, in 2004, discussions began with the DEP, and they really revolved around what options are available, the county comprehensive water supply study, the 1970 version and the 1989 version, both advocate interconnections between Highland and New Paltz and between Highland and Marlboro, so that the Delaware Aqueduct, Hudson River Supply, and Cascal Aqueduct Supplies would all be interconnected, so if one of them went down for whatever reason or there was a problem, water could be fed back. So that is genesis of, you know, that is in an official county document. The plans to restore the Cascal Aqueduct were put on hold by DEP due to a variety of reasons, including financial issues and other issues they're facing with their water system and Delaware Aqueduct issues, which is pressure tunnel that serves, that crosses Cascal Aqueduct in Gardner. So everything was kind of put on hold for several years, and in 2011, the DEP contacted the village and started discussing this again. I think it's fair to say that the mayor's position to the DEP was, we've invested in meeting the shutdown requirements that are in the contract, and any shutdowns that go beyond that time period, we would expect of the DEP to fund any emergency supply that could support the village system for longer than the five-day shutdown.
This is the 1992 contract?
Correct. So that has been the mayor's position when he was mayor the first time, and has been his position with the DEP, and, you know, of course, I'll let him say that to you, you know, he's expected to be here tonight, but he's not. And I think it was a position of other mayors as well during these discussions. And so based on that, the DEP agreed to fund a study of alternative backup emergency water supply systems for the village of New Paltz. And on June 19th, they presented that to the mayor and Blue Twiliger and the operator of the system and our office, at their offices in Kingston. They have an office facility in Midtown Kingston. Based on that, they said we would welcome a proposal from the village that we would fund to take these alternatives identified in the Hazen and Sawyer report, which is a Saguaro report, and evaluate the three alternatives in more detail, which ones may be viable and which ones may not be viable.
And the three alternatives are?
The three alternatives they identified were a well field in the vicinity of the county property on Libertyville Road, which is where the pool complex is, and they did do some initial analysis at that site. The village's well field on Springtown Road, which is alternative two. And then they threw in Walk Hill River.
Well, we know that.
And, of course, in the discussions, there are open to other ideas, but that was what Hazen and Sawyer identified as possibilities. They didn't come out and say any of them were viable to meet this 800 gallon a minute, 1,000 gallon a day requirement. So, based on that, we sent the report immediately to the New York State Department of Health, Village Bill Daze's office, to get their feedback on what alternatives they felt were appropriate, and also specifically whether they would even consider the Walk Hill River as a potential source, albeit even for the shutdown period, so everyone knows this proposal is 10 weeks in 2016 and possibly 10 weeks in 2017, which they feel during that second one, they may be able to keep the village in service during that, that would probably be work below Gardner, where they could keep the water in the Cascal Aqueduct from Gardner back to the Shokan Reservoir. So, we received responses from Department of Health, I'll leave copies of last week, and oddly enough, they did not take the Walk Hill River off the table, they said it could be considered, but they stipulated what kind of testing, pilot testing, they would want to see on that supply before, you know, it would go any further in feasibility.
New copies of the reports?
Yes.
Might we have it in case we have questions?
I'll give you copies of the email from Min Suk Kim, PhD, PE, Department of Health, which came back last week.
Well, we need confirmation. Oh, I have it. Do you have one?
I do not.
There is one, three in time.
Based on that, and also on the discussions with DEP at the June meeting, the, we prepared an outline proposal of evaluating those three options in more detail pursuant to the DEP's request, the village submit a proposal. So, today, we submitted a proposal, which I'll give you copies of to read, but basically, it involves much more exploration, well drilling, and pump tests at the two well sites identified in the Hazen and Sawyer report, some pilot testing of the Walk Hill River, and a lot more testing of the Walk Hill River, water supply. At the meeting today, it was kind of agreed that that probably would be a step back, that there was a lot of public concern about the Walk Hill River being used, and that's something that could be implemented quicker.
Yes, you said today you submitted copies of a proposal. Is that submitted on behalf of the village?
What it was, was a draft, and we're going to present to you tonight, and it basically was a budget number and scope and list of professionals that would be involved, should the village decide, and of course, DEP to fund, to want to go through with this program.
So we may or may not agree?
Absolutely. And they may not either.
Well, that's a given, but I mean, I think we, the village, should be in agreement on what is being proposed.
Absolutely. It was also, some other options were discussed on the table, perhaps temporary impoundments in the vicinity west of the Walk Hill, Decad Store, 90 days of water, 10 to 12 weeks of water supply, just for that one 2016 season. They were not very high on anything temporary, if they're going to fund it, they want something more permanent as a backup. So, that was, that was put on the table for discussion purposes, you know, in a draft form, and there was one of, one potential option that was discussed involving potentially skimming off this Klein Kill for that 10 or 12-week period that at least had some interest, I think, Tom, that's fair to say. Yes. They also indicated that they've just hired an engineering firm to design the improvements to the Cascal Aqueduct, they're not designing yet, they've just retained a firm named Jacobs to design improvements to the Cascal Aqueduct that would improve the, basically, they're looking to improve the hydraulic capacity of the aqueduct by removing a biofilm that's developed on the aqueduct, it's reduced its hydraulic capacity, and also making some repairs where necessary. So, the 2016, 2017 work is not set in stone, and it's certainly, based on their, you know, what they represented in 2004, their schedule could change and get pushed back again, but that, you know...
Two points.
Sure.
If I'm right, in your counter proposal, or whatever you're calling it, was there any discussion about revisiting the two well fields that were closed? The one that you talked about on the Walk Hill, that was closed when the water went the other way, and the well field on Springtown Road?
Yes. The, they're one in the same. The well field on Springtown Road and the, the former village well field on Springtown Road is one in the same. What was also discussed, so we're...
That is the same one?
Yes.
You referred to it two different ways.
Well, no, okay, what I meant, I hope, was the county property on Libertyville Road.
That's in the new proposal.
That's one, and the village property on Springtown Road, where wells used to exist and supply the village system, would be two, but we also talked today about adding some other sites in if property owners are willing in that area.
For the sake of my own attention, the county, recently, what I'm asking about, that's a new proposal, the village had one or two well fields?
Well, the village had a string of very shallow well points down, I call it one well field, but it was in two sections along Springtown.
So it was two sections of one well field, okay.
And the old plans for that, which were in our records from the McCaffrey engineers in the 40s and 50s, was given to Hazen and Sawyer before they started their study, so they could have the data, at least we had an arthrose on that.
But they, they did not know about the well fields, the string of the, on Springtown Road?
Yes, they did.
They did, okay. So they can be revisited?
Yes.
And...
One, just, one of the problems with that well field decides that it's in a flood plain, and, you know, it had very high iron and manganese levels, and would require filtration in today's world, and probably even back in the 60s, that water wasn't very welcome by customers in the village system.
But if we're talking about options, it's cheaper, it might be cheaper for DEP to offer them to build a filtering plant and stay closer to home than the option you mentioned earlier, key avoid the Highland or order to Gardner?
Correct.
So, okay.
All of the options that are being discussed are extremely expensive, and I know the towns have it, me, Torn, I didn't, and I don't know what options they're considering, but...
Who answered that now? 2016, comes very quickly.
Absolutely.
When does the village board need to make a decision as to what direction we're going with the DEP?
Well, on the basis of the meeting today, where the proposal they requested from the village was delivered, again, a draft form is just a talking document for now, they're going to look at it and maybe... going to look at it and maybe ask for some additions and some deletions from the scope of work, and they're going to come, and Tom invited them.
As we mentioned, we, I will now send a message to the mayor, asking the mayor to invite them to either the very next board meeting, or the subsequent board meeting, so that our board, the four of us, and then the mayor, can be fully briefed on the state of affairs at the present time, with whatever level of confidence you can have about the state of affairs at the present time, since everything must be considered draft, and those drafts are going to have to be budgeted, so the numbers are going to have to be put on every option to determine what the DEP will even possibly say yes to, because they're funding it, they made very clear, they're going to be a determinant of which options are going to be selected.
Right, but we have to know what the options are.
Absolutely, without question.
And I want to ask the clerk, do you have a copy of the proposal that was made in response, the village's response today? I do not.
I'm delivering those right now to you. I have a copy, and copies are brought tonight for the rest of the board.
Because I think it's all well and good we talk about drafts, and I agree, I understand exactly what you're saying, Tom, but I think the village board needs to be a major part of this discussion before anybody commits, anybody, anything.
That's why he's here.
No, he should have been here before.
Well, in fairness, that's probably my fault, what we wanted to meet right after... We were going to come down and meet right after, in early July, and I suggested that we wait for the DOH response to this report, which was received last week. And also, I wanted to get quotes, which are included in, from really qualified high-end hydrogeology and gravel, gravel well drillers, and send them the reports and get proposals back from them, and budget numbers back from them, that could be presented both to the village board and the DEP.
I gave to the village clerk the contact information for people in DEP, and she's already been in touch with their offices, to ensure that we'll have them here as early as possible.
And you've sent the email to the mayor, asked you if they'd invite?
I don't think I have yet.
If you have, but you're going to.
Mr. Laras, is there any reason that this document couldn't be made available to the public on the, on the village website?
The only thing I would say is, I don't have a problem with that, it's a draft, and based on today's meeting, and this was discussed in draft form with the DEP, there's going to be several changes to the scope of work and the work items included in this. Certain things are going to be taken right off the table, certain things are going to be put on the side table, and some things are going to be added in.
By them or us?
Possibly by both. They certainly want a little bit more geoprobe investigation of some areas, they would like the village to approach a couple of property owners, and I think it was agreed that the Walk Hill River option, maybe take a side, side burner, for the time being, so...
Mike, we have the discussion with DEP when they come, and I hope you'll be here that night?
DEP.
And...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, DEP.
Before we put anything up on the website, because...
Absolutely, it's the purpose of the board.
The board itself may say, we don't want to explore that option, or we want to explore this, or would you add exploring this? And until this board can have that kind of discussion with both, it seems to me, we don't want to put anything out there yet until we've had a chance to, I mean, as I told Dennis earlier, I mean, you know, the board just received the report that was presented in '19, so we need time to digest that, we need time to digest this, we need then, time to discuss all of this.
I'm thinking we should have a special meet, I mean, I know, but we don't have to answer this tonight, but we should have a special meeting for this, because I think there's, yeah, there's a lot that we can talk about, and we might want to do it in between all the last meeting in August, our first meeting in September.
I think that's not a bad idea, and I also think...
I agree with that also.
I also think that after tomorrow night, we will know more, and perhaps we would invite the town to us, to join us, and maybe people in the, in the community who know about these things, there's one sitting in the audience who might be able to guide and help us on the whole issue of water.
When, when if, okay, let's see, I have a calendar on.
Yeah, it's here, maybe September 4th.
I will tell you that the village hall is always booked for the first weekend, and I, as a clerk, I would be happy to call and say, I'm so sorry, we're not able to, but I've got some nutrition meets here that night, I believe the Sierra Club.
What are you thinking?
She's looking at...
I mean, I was a sitting September 4th, it's the first Wednesday, but if that's not...
I would, I would be back on the way, the last week of August and the beginning of September, so I'd like to be here.
I would like everyone to be here.
September 18?
Sounds good.
Well, I mean, the 11th is our next village board meeting, we could dedicate that meeting to this, and then have an additional meeting on the 18th to conduct our regular business, so that we can get a handle on this sooner.
The sooner we get a handle on it, the sooner Dennis can know what we're thinking, and...
How does that sound regarding?
The village hall should be, I, it'll take me a second to verify the village hall calendar, but it's likely that it will not be a problem, I'll check that right now.
So we're going to use the first meeting, our regular first meeting?
September 11. I'm just double checking the village hall calendar, and after I do that, then if the board would like to make a motion, certainly I can report it.
So do we have to do anything, do we have to pass a motion to...
Probably it would be best to give me just two seconds to bring up the village hall calendar to make sure, wait, let me just make sure...
She's going to make sure that.
That there isn't a major reason why we couldn't do it. Let her look at the calendar.
Yeah, regardless, we can do this on the 11th, and we don't even have to set the 18th tonight, we could set the 18th at the last meeting in August, if we want, you know, whatever, whatever's on the...
Who knows, maybe we'll have a light load.
Oh, you are a wishful thinking.
I like the way you're thinking there. The report that DEP prepared does have, at least, ballpark figures that were prepared by Hazen and Sawyer, which is an excellent firm, and implementation period on the three options that they evaluated, which were the two wellfield sites and the Walk Hill. And, you know, they're indicating up to a four-year implementation period, and cost ranging up to $7.7 million. These are, this is not...
A four-year implementation period, that's before, I mean, that's after...
If they're saying four years...
The shutdowns.
They intend to start this in 2016, as well?
Type.
It's more than that.
More than that.
Not doable.
So, if that is true, then they aren't going to be able to start in 2016, they will have to implement it, or they will have to begin once it's fully implemented, and that's their responsibility, right?
Yeah, I think for them, and New Paltz, the two communities in New Paltz, and are not the only communities connected to the aqueduct.
Right.
Where the aqueduct, they're, they're getting, obviously, facing, trying to help communities develop backup supplies that aren't contractually required right now, beyond, as far as I know, the village is five day off, two days on, for three consecutive periods. You know, Town of Newburgh, Town of Marlborough, High Falls, is on the Catskill Aqueduct, and there's numerous other foreign law, I believe.
But the fact remains, this board is elected to be concerned, absolutely, the village, we sell to the town, we have to protect the town's interests as well as village residents, any end, college, community, which we sell to, so...
Your contractually obligation to those two entities.
Right, and so I'm not sure I will be too amenable to be concerned about Newburgh.
No, I'm just saying that the DEP is, their schedule is very optimistic, because they would have, politically, they would have trouble shutting anyone off that's not prepared for the shutdown, especially a community with a collagen issue, but any community, they would, politically, that would be, and legally, that would be very difficult. So that's why they are now being more aggressive about funding community backup supplies, which they were not offering, you know, in 2004, 2005, and they were taking a harder line, and offering maybe to participate to some degree.
So, we've got all this to digest, or we...
And now, you had also, if I can go ahead, you also mentioned potential sites where we would need property owner approval?
Well, any site where you would want to evaluate for well exploration that's not owned by a...
Village, the village of the town, basically.
Or a public entity would be a lot easier to deal with than necessarily probably a private entity, and sometimes just negotiations for drilling rights on private property can take years.
But I assume that you know of some private properties that should be explored, or you wouldn't have said it?
Right, well, they, they also identified, and their hydrogeologists identified some properties that they feel should be explored beyond the village property and county property.
Is that in the Hazen and Sawyer report that we got?
Not directly, they do mention other areas in general, but they don't identify the property owners.
Okay.
But any, they did identify, I believe, north of Libertyville, north of the Cantico, coming towards 299, and they did identify today, the Osko area, that's north of the sewer treatment plant, as an area to, they would like to see significantly, some significant exploration, and again, that's not owned by a public entity.
I would suggest that what they would say, if I got them correctly, and I think I did, is that they would not be satisfied if the only explorations that are in place were those on the village-owned property.
Right.
They would say, look, you know, you can go 15 feet further in one direction or another, and you might find a totally different gravel field than that which happens to be in the one spot you investigate. So they said they want to see explorations that went farther north and farther south of any of the properties that happened to be owned by the village.
Question, they want to see?
Yes.
They are going to do?
They're going to contract.
Okay.
They will, these, each of these issues has to be then put into a new form of the proposal, and then, of course, it has to be monetized, and then it has to be...
And some of these properties are private, and therefore you cannot reveal the names because of negotiation.
Not only that, but everybody, remember the song, "Everybody knows, everybody knows." Everybody knows that it will be extremely difficult dealing with private property owners, or at least it might be, and that...
I never assumed anything is difficult, Tom, nor did it is.
No kidding, well, I'm telling you now, that it's very likely to be very difficult.
Well, all I'm saying, Tom, is we better begin.
We better begin, well, that was the message, that was the message today, I think, from all parties.
Yeah, but we better...
That we're at a point now where we have to make step one towards this plan, not ideas, not...
But that wants, needs to know the plan.
So, to know a plan, which is right now a grand plan.
Discuss a plan.
Just mentioned that we, the village did do additional well exploration in 2002, 2003, also with Alphatea Science.
Do you have that with you?
I don't have it with me tonight, but, I'll get it. That was mostly geared up, I believe, up near the village property on the mountain, to see, anything that's closer to Mount Rice Road, and those plant means a lot less cost as far as transmission into the system that feeds the village to the campus and the town.
Well, that makes sense, I mean, but, just say, I know that there is, I mean, when Cross Road was before the planning board in the town, and it was much discussed, there's a huge aquifer there, or at least that's what we all were told. Now, if that is true, and it's huge, and it's the best thing that in all good judgment could be judged appropriate, they would be willing to help us, I presume, get the water from X to Y?
Yes.
Okay.
The question is, and Dave probably knows a lot more about that, aquifer, and what testing and drilling, and what yields have been established on that, I assume, I don't know very much except what I've heard anecdotally, but this is 800 gallon a minute requirement, and could that be, or wells, other wells that weren't looked at by Hazen and Sawyer, or the potential would be part of the solution? Yes, absolutely.
But it doesn't all have to come from one place, does it?
No.
You could have 400 gallons per minute over here, and 400 over here.
But it depends too on...
Or 1,200 altogether.
Depends on the water quality of the well, whether the well water requires filtration, you know, treatment beyond just dissection.
But as far as we know, other than what we know from river paper about the Walk Hill, which we know about, no hydrological...
Did you look at that?
...tests have been done, and no potential reserves have been done on potential sites.
Okay, so no one else can do it?
Preliminary, some preliminary exploration works have been done, it's in the back summarizing report.
I follow that, but that's it?
Pretty much.
Okay, so we, Katie checked the calendar, the 18th is now reserved for us, should we decide to hold a meeting that date, so we can go ahead and look at September 11th to bring up this topic again, and...
I'll move to have a meeting on September 11th for the purposes of water only, inviting the DEP, our engineers, the town, and all other interested parties.
I will second, but with the hopefully friendly amendment, that we will dedicate our already existing September 11th meeting.
Absolutely, yes.
Not to, because we're already having a meeting.
Yes, and then make the 18th a...
Alternative.
Yes, if the, either alternative, if the 11th doesn't work out for everybody, and reverse the power.
Which, yes, which we can determine at our next meeting on the 28th.
Okay, I've reserved the rooms as a, and specifically as a potential meeting, so you'll let me know at the next meeting, and then we'll notice, do the proper noticing that you need.
Sounds good.
Hold a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Questions, thank you, and by, in a week or so, I expect that we'll have comments back from DEP's meeting today, and I think you'll learn more tomorrow night with the town.
Before Dennis goes, since we didn't have public input, could we ask the public to ask any questions about the water?
If anyone has any questions, start, Mike.
I don't know, first we'll, go ahead.
I just have a reaction.
I just have a reaction, and the reaction was the invitation, the invitation for other parties, it sounds like the college uses four or five tons as much water as the town does.
That's very good, Don.
And I am concerned, if you begin inviting customers, minority customers, to the table as equals, that's going to make a very difficult issue more complicated, more difficult. So I'm very supportive of the suggestion to invite all users, but I think it should be clear that they're customers. This is a village issue, it's a village issue of long standing, and you guys are in charge, and inviting input, input is great, and customers should get input, but customers don't get a piece of the car, and that's really important, especially when you have a clock ticking. So that one comment just set off some red flags.
But I'm glad you mentioned the college, because I didn't include them, and I think that's been important.
And it's not that they use as much as five tons as much as the town, so we're going to invite people to the table.
Point of clarification to the board?
Yes.
Are you holding your regular board meeting as the board and inviting, and specifically inviting people to be in attendance, or are you asking them to be part of a joint meeting?
Asking them to be in attendance.
In attendance, so that it will specifically only be the village board will be sitting?
Correct, DEP presenting to the village board along with Dennis to guide us and help us understand and to explore options to discuss the response that Dennis said was submitted today, which we now have a copy of. But it's our meeting, we invited people, we want to call them customers, I don't care.
It just makes a difference for noticing that I needed to...
It's a village board meeting, it's a village board meeting.
And I certainly think the customers should be able to ask questions during the meeting.
I have a question about college as a major customer, and you may be able to address this, has the college implemented comprehensive water conservation, or is an institution that has the ability to? And if it hasn't, then that's, might be part of the package?
Right.
And then there'd be a long-term benefit to creating this, you know, maybe it could be a $6 million instead of a $7 million account, whatever.
Well, definitely in all their new construction and anything that's been renovated, their water conserve, conservation, you know, plumbing, basically, yeah. I don't, I don't know if they've retrofitted everything, but...
That's what I'm suggesting as something that you might want to toss into the mix, as something to consider in light of this pending need.
Just for the record, I think Dennis, at the flow of the town and college, during the peak, college is less than twice as much as the town, and overall for the year, they're less than that.
Well, I think the information, the last information I had was that the town average of usage was about 70,000 gallons a day, and the college average was, I believe, around 122,000 gallons a day. The college peaks up and drops down depending on, obviously, activities, and of course, the village demand goes up from college to the session as well, because of the population increases, but, so, the numbers I have, at least on yearly average, was 70,000 town, 122,000 college metered campus usage in the balance village. Then you also have leakage.
You said 800,000 to 1.1 million?
That's your total water reduction sent out into the system, some has lost through leaks as well, in everyone's system, the villages, the towns, and the, and the college, but for the most part, your leakage rate is, you know, under 10%.
That high?
Yeah, I mean, I'll have the operators, you know, I'll get that number from the operators, because I know it runs.
That's pretty high, you know, it's 10%.
And Dan wanted to...
Probably in that range, I'll get you an example.
I have an observation and a question. We're nearing a 100-year anniversary of the aqueduct. I think it was opened in the teens?
Yeah.
So it's antiquated equipment at best, holes that were in the midst of real concerns of climate change, and somehow I feel that New Falls is not going to be highest on the priority list if there is an issue about water. And I'm hoping that we're thinking about more than the interval that it takes to repair the aqueduct, and hoping that we're thinking about a long-term solution. And I'm just, I'm not opening that up for discussion because the heat's still lax. But the question I have, my uncle John Meyer, the architect, and I have for a long time felt that the dip on Mountain West Road, and you mentioned the Clean Hill, is an ideal place for a reservoir. It's ideal because of the confluence, as you will, of the Clean Hill and the pipe that goes down to New Falls, which both gives us water from the aqueduct and water that feeds the reservoir. Has that been considered as a reservoir?
Well, actually, that alternative, which you've just described, has been, is being discussed with DEP. They're nervous about impoundments, obviously, because of the time to get permitting done. But where the Clean Hill, of course, and Mountain West Road is one area that they did show an interest in, and was discussed today, and large flat fields there in that vicinity that could potentially store water to support the system during prolonged shutdown.
I live on Mountain West Road, and I really wouldn't mind always driving around if there was a reservoir there.
Thank you.
There are people that would not like the idea as well.
I'm sure.
All right, any other questions before we move on?
I just wanted to make the record clear that that five-time number that Don used would make it 350,000 gallons a day, which is, you know, 122 and 350, it's an engineer's thing, those numbers stick.
Yeah, it's a fact that 1.1 million, or neither of those, I can put that number, that's where I feel it's at, I apologize, clarification.
Fair enough, the town, I mean, the town, you know, I think there has to be better, obviously, relationships here with respect to, there's been, redesigned the town water districts back in the 60s, I think, and there was so much fighting going on about water and sewer and diamonds, we just couldn't work for both parties anymore. There are town-village relationships that, you know, everyone feels, I think, a little more comfortable with the water and sewer contracts than what currently probably exists down here, there's room, and the town is, you know, in the agreement with the city of New York as well. So we're certainly party to the agreement.
So they are not just a customer, they are contractual obligations on, but you're right about the college, we need to have them involved, too.
And, did you have a question?
Just an, offending Mayor West's comment about water conservation, these crises are also opportunities for all of us to start a whole thinking about conserving water and how much we are using as individuals and as a community. So I would just suggest that we begin, and maybe there's a group that could form and talk to assist and help the village board with these decisions, getting word out, and, you know, addressing different groups and individuals and schools, for example, about water conservation. And I think the sooner we start thinking about other communities have done, I'm sure the wonderful test, so just, and to...
Okay, so, okay, can we do one more, Susan, and then, we're, we are having a meeting on this topic on September 11th, please join us so that we can continue the discussion, and we do have a number of items on the agenda, and I know there's a lot of people here for public comment, so, go ahead, Susan.
I just want to say, considering that one of the goals of the DEP, as we understand it, is they actually want communities upstate to create their own water system and get off of the aqueduct, and the town over the years has identified numerous sources of water within the town. So our conversations with the DEP have really only been to let them know about what water we have in the town, and how the water in the town could create an opportunity to possibly solve their problems for the village if they needed that to be part of the equation. And so, we are not negotiating in any way on behalf of the village, it's not our role, it's not our place, we just have water, we wanted them to know about it. In that conversation, that's where we learned about the study, and from that conversation we learned that there was an awful lot of water that has been found in the county on the town property, and so, when we found that out, we sort of said, well, let's have a conversation together as a community, let's learn about this all together, and then we invited, you know, asked, we asked them to have the meeting, we invited you, and when I did invite you, I thought you guys had already been privy to the, to the, to the study, and so if there was any confusion, I'm just sorry, but that was the purpose tomorrow, is to invite you so we could all learn together what the study says, and so we could all just figure out as a community where we go from here. That's it, we're not negotiating in New York.
Yeah, that's fine, we'll all be much better informed at the September 11th meeting, after we grade all this.
But I don't think I'll be...
I will also leave you some letters.
Okay, that's fine, okay. I just want to say, as we move on to public comment, what, did you have something else?
These are additional letters that, just so you have, I'm going to give them to you.
They're letters that were written to DEP by the village, or on behalf of the village concerning this matter, both in 2011 and 2005.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you so much. Okay, I just want to, before we open public comment, the next two items on the agenda, I'm sure many of you are here for, as many of you know, the village board passed a proposal to convert the heating system for the village from oil to natural gas. Trustee Vasco and I voted no on, on that item, I have, seeing that Mayor West is not here, I did discuss it with him, and he agreed for us to reopen the issue. I know a lot of you are here for that, and basically, we're, we're planning to rescind that vote and reopen the discussion. And then the other piece...
You can't rescind, you don't have the votes to rescind. All we're going to do is...
We're going to discuss it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the next piece, I believe some of you are here for, is the short-term rental discussion in the historical district, followed by a parking memo from our village planner, Herr Huguenot Street. So, let's go ahead and open the discussion, the public comment, and if we could, I'd kind of like, if you don't mind, we'll start on this side of the room and then kind of move our way across.
I'm Ann Guther, and I'm with the New Falls Climate Action Coalition, and I just wanted to let the board know, our, our mission is to educate ourselves and other groups, including the village and individuals in the community, about climate change science, ecology, and responses in order to mitigate and prepare for climate change. And our short and long range, and we support short and long-range planning to deal with local environmental, social consequences of climate change, also to analyze and support legislation at our local, state, and national, and international level to reduce the causes and mitigate the effects of climate change. We are here, many of us from Climate Action, to be of service to the village board. We have spent, many of us, several years in studying especially the issue of natural gas and its impact on the country, the climate, internationally, and we would like to support with the knowledge that we have gained in our studies over the last few years that might inform your decision. I'm just going to speak real quickly, that I appreciate the fact that we have a local board that has a bottom line that I think works in this community and in the world. Your bottom line is not just financial, it is also environmental and social, and I think we are very lucky. There are many communities throughout the world that don't have that. So we can make our decisions based not just on the bottom line of money, we're looking at many aspects in this issue of natural gas. Unfortunately, the natural gas industry has a different bottom line, which is to make money for their investors. So we may be sometimes at odds with that, with those services which may be offered to our community, and that's why I think we have to be very careful in analyzing our decisions, because we have some history now of natural gas exploration and production in this country. Hydro fracking is fairly new, there are many communities that are being fracked right now that are not prepared to deal with the different issues that have come along, such as regulations, environmental impacts. The natural gas companies are moving fast, they have money to support some of the best media output, and we have to be very cautious. The proposals that are presented often say, well, this is going to be a cheap source of natural fuel for the community, that's something that triggers us. They can also claim the environmental, the lack of environmental degradation, but that too has to be very carefully analyzed, and we do have history, and the information that backs it up, that it's not always the case. So, just basically, I think that we need to look at ourselves, and I think you do too, we, we think, we, we think globally and we act locally, and I feel that we are blessed with people who have that as part of our, our basis of making a decision. Also, our influence, Green Bay had an article about New Falls, about our doing zero net energy homes, I mean, who'd have thought it appeared in Green Bay Gazette? People are looking at New Falls, we are looking, Europe is looking at the United States and saying, what are we doing with fracking? So there, this is a very tricky issue right now, a lot of information is correct and a lot of it is incorrect. So, a lot of us have done research, and I'm going to yield to other people to talk about some of the issues.
Careful, watch your head.
Hi, my name is Osmond Cherry, and I talk hours about natural gas, but I think in a very specific topic, and the topic is that a lot of us were very concerned about the lack of public input. And the thing about New Falls is we have lots of citizens, lots of well-informed citizens, and so, it's just really important that when something like this comes up again, to really give the citizens a chance to tell what they know. And you're going to see in a few minutes, just the few people who are going to be speaking about how much good information that we have. And I just want to add one other thing, which is, I was talking to somebody today, another citizen, who brought up the idea, if, what if we do convert 25 platycil, which is this basic structure, to natural gas? Well, we don't know what's going to happen with consolidation, so let's say that the village and the town consolidate, and this property becomes obsolete, that's something to think about. And the other thing is, what if the village decides to dissolve itself? I'm just saying, these are possible things that might happen, so that when we're talking about taking 25 platycil and converting it to natural gas, it might be a move point at some point down the road. Anyway, I just wanted to mention that we really hope for, that, you know, public comment will be considered more in the future, and we all appreciate that we can, everybody's got some really good comments to make, so I will, you know, finish with that.
Thank you.
I really wasn't planning on speaking tonight, I was reading, I have some email and ran down here, but I'm also very, very concerned that there was no input, and I feel also that sometimes we look at what's cheaper, but in the long run, we need to look at what is the most effective, and there may be others, there are other sources out there other than natural gas to be able to power up electricity in this building, so really you believe that there needs to be an opportunity to be able to listen to a lot of different people, and I was just a little bit concerned as to how that vote had been taken.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Casey Goodman of Intals. I'm just going to say whatever the Climate Action people say about the environmental comments on natural gas, I'm just saying, you know, about that, and I think also from a long-term economic perspective, I just want to go. I do want to make a couple of comments on process, one is, Donna and I said, Mary Thomas, for this great idea, have a two-meeting room, basically, first off, everybody has to get a... Basically, first off, everybody has to get everything in their packets. You have to be in the packets by Friday at noon, so everybody can redo everything. Discuss it on the first Wednesday, vote on it on the second Wednesday, sorry. Really simple, I think we're compiling a list of mistakes that are being made by not using this really simple structural process. I would also ask that if you vote on this again, that trustee Rhodes and trustee Rocco refuse themselves, since they're residents of Platte Hill Avenue, and it could be perceived as a conflict of interest that you could hook up eventually. Not that I would want to do it, but you may perceive that as something that you would do. And so I think it's a little murky there, and that you should refuse yourself from that vote. I do have a comment also on the short-term rentals in the village. I didn't know if you wanted to go around each topic or--
Go ahead.
I don't want to talk about a particular case on New Pulse Street, I don't, I don't know enough about it, but it has bubbled up, and so now we're talking about this issue of short-term rentals. And I just want to encourage you to be very careful and cautious when you are looking at the regulations and you're looking at zoning, because while this particular case bubbled up and didn't fly under the radar, this is happening all over New Pulse. If you go to Airbnb and you put in New Pulse, hundreds come up. I know more than a few single moms that do this and stay with relatives so they can pay their mortgage. I know lots of senior citizens do it that couldn't, you know, travel to Europe because they do house swaps. I know people that stay in their house and just rent out a room so they can rent up, so they can make their mortgage. So I think you have to be really, really careful, because this is part of the new economy. We are in, in New Pulse, whoever, everybody knows that the supply for lodging is not New Pulse Avenue because we're a destination. So I don't know if we're going to do something just for the historic district, I don't know if we're going to do something macro for the whole village, but I think we need to be really careful and thoughtful about how we're going to regulate this, because there's lots of people who are doing it, and there's lots of people who are able to live to stay in New Pulse because they don't care. And the reason they're flying under the radar is because it's working for that. I just wanted to clarify that out as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Because of public access TV, and let's come near the front of the room for comments. And when you see these meetings on TV, you often can't hear the people in the audience. So maybe you might want to think of a microphone or a podium or something like they do with the town board, because it's, you know, the people watch the meetings to find out what's going on, and an hour of stuff comes from, from the audience, you know, that's a problem. I want to really thank you for the stop signs on Montague View in that neighborhood, it's an issue that I brought up. And it really, you know, it's a small thing, but it's a big thing. If you've got kids and you live there and you've got cars coming through, stop signs is a big deal. So thank you so much. Katie took my, took my point, and that's, that's okay. But I want to, want to put some, some perspective to this, this discussion we're having tonight, where you're having to vote one meeting and having possibly a discussion, possibly rescind it at the next meeting. Two-meeting rule, folks, it's, it's good governing, it's the way to not find yourself embarrassed. And I, I would look at many issues, you know, there was a couple of meetings ago where there was an issue of, of, was it a residency or a planning law? And the attorney and the planner were in the audience. But rather than let them do their work and come back to your next meeting, the decision was to, to write the law at the table. And I just think if you've got expertise out there and you don't use it, it's not the best way to govern. So I, I would hate it if the village board got a reputation as fast and sloppy. And this issue, that's what it looks like. And I also, you know, if, I don't buy it personally, that the benefits of natural gas are to save money. I think the costs far outweigh the savings. But I think if that is the basis for your decision, and I think if, you know, if indeed the households of some trustees could save money by this decision, by the village board to run the lines here, and just because you happen to live in this neighborhood, you would also have financial benefit potentially, I think that is a legitimate conflict of interest. And it's, that's here for you to decide, I'm with your mother. But I think it's an issue that's been raised, and I think it's, it's one that needs to be really, really thought about.
But it's really happened since I've--
Mary, prepare for the--
I'd like to just clarify something, since two people have made the insinuation that there is a conflict of interest and that trustees who voted for this should not vote or abstain. I voted for the issue out of, for several reasons. One, because I believe at the moment that with oil going to $100 a barrel again, and the gas discussion for the village hall has been on the table among the mayor and board members since I've been on the board. But I personally will not benefit. I have a personal aversion to gas. I will never have it. And even if you gave it to me, I wouldn't have it, because it is a personal, I, there's a personal tragedy that happened in my life when I was very young, and I will never, ever have gas. So not to have asked that question of a board member before the statement was made, I will take exception to it. Thank you.
Okay, if we could continue with public comment?
Hey, Rebecca. I just wanted to respond to the woman who spoke at the back, because I know there has been confusion, and we've tried so hard to be so specific about what we mean by short-term rentals on Huguenot Street.
Come up the end, because I think--
Just do this quickly, but we're not talking about a house swap when people go to Tuscany or a single mom who is running out of room. We're talking about three men who have never lived in this house, ever, not for a week, who bought it as an investment in the heart of the historic district and are running an extremely lucrative business to the $200,000 of dollars a month. As we speak, there are people there in New York and New Jersey tonight. We've had cars on the front lawn, as many as eight cars in front of the house in one night, on the curb of, you know, Huguenot Street. It has been awful, in a word. They have never lived in this community, they have no investment in this community, they live in Brooklyn and run a business. Those are two very, very different things, from a house swap to Tuscany. In our neighborhood, I wouldn't care less if any of our neighbors did that. Of course, there are people on Huguenot Street that are renting. This is a business that is being run by a non-occupied owner at a distance to the, how do I want to say, what do you call the environment of other people like Roger, it's different? I'm sorry, what do you call it?
Like when you're in, you know, the--
Yeah, exactly. And it's been going on since the end of March, and it is going on, as we speak, even though they were issued a cease and desist letter. So I think that's a very different thing from someone being able to pay their mortgage because they're charging $325 a night and sleeps none. So I think it's not, you know, like renting a room. So I just wanted to be clear on that, because we have no objection to anyone in our community doing any of those things. Running a business in the heart of the historic district, to my knowledge, is not, I don't, what would you say, is not--
Allowed.
Give me your word.
More public comment? Come on, Joe.
I'm Karen Catters, and New Pulse is a very respected community. I go places and people know about New Pulse. We're sort of have a reputation for being forward-thinking, and I'm very proud of living, I don't live in the village, I live in the town, but I'm very proud of living here, I thought here. And I'm pretty sure Governor Cuomo was at New Pulse. And Governor Cuomo's in kind of a tricky position right now, you know, there's a lot going on, you know. He's, he's got a 65% approval rating, so he's, he, I'm sure he's, I don't know, everyone will, but he's, I think he may be poised to make a decision. This is a no-fracking state, this is a big deal. I go around, people say, New York is doing all right, it's still no-fracking. We had a big party about it on Main Street, because it's a no-fracking state, it's a big deal. And Governor Cuomo's in the, in a position now where he's, he wants to be president, and he's like, you know, he's looking at, looking at the future, and he's also, he's, he's kind of, you know, he's kind of boxed himself in between a gun lobby and fracking, but he's in a good position to do something right, because he's got, he's in a good position to do something right. And I think, looking at New Pulse as a little town that does something right, and when they do something wrong, they fix it. And New Pulse is, is, is known for doing things right and looking at things, and you know, there are other towns, I think it's big, we're little. And, and so I think we have to really look at what, what really is important, what really is important is we got a big deal problem with climate change, and we have to do everything we can. Of course, the most important thing, and I've heard that word conserve, and I think conserve, 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 I wrote it on my piece of paper, we had that approved. When we were swapping, I wrote conserve, conserve, conserve. We have to do that first, foremost, insulate, do everything we can. But after we've done that, we have to look at, you know, at what else we can do. And when we make a decision that we're, you know, we're questioning, and, and we're looking at the possibility of doing something about climate change, climate change, we're at the 410 hertz per million, power deficit, and to get it down to 350 hertz per million, which is the, which was considered what we need to do to kind of balance things, to get things back where we, where we have some possibility of getting, of not destroying civilization as we know it. So we've got a lot of work to do, and we've got to start now. And every little thing that we can do in terms of questioning what we do, that's what I'm asking. Let's be consistent and try to, like, think about what to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Straps, I'm with the Climate Action Coalition, and mostly, I want to thank you very much for reconsidering this decision, particularly given how rapidly it was made, my understanding of that. Particularly want to thank Arianna for really drilling down, no pun intended, into this issue. I mean, I was just scanning your items you put on the agenda, and my, yes, quite so. If you didn't mean to kill that many tree limbs--
I actually said--
They were pixels. No, no, pixels were killer. One thing, just because I have the floor for a moment, I want to ask people to be careful of the gas industry's language when they talk about fracking, which is a type of drilling that's been going on for a long time, as opposed to, is it the same, no, it's not, as horizontal hydraulic, high-pressure fracturing of, of the rock to get out the natural gas. So the semantic things sometimes come into play in the discussions of natural gas. You really, Arianna, you really went into all the business with methane, and the fact that you do have to account for the methane emissions, and you also have to account for the full life cycle from production to final combustion and all the transportation and the leaks. And the, the report that, that, I did kill trees, the report, the very, whatever, not highly detailed report that I believe you folks had a chance to look at before the last meeting, is very seductive. It says, quote, "Natural gas is a cleaner fuel, switching is the right thing for the environment," exclamation point, environmentally friendly. And it also talks about how you can reduce your annual carbon footprint by, and it discusses the reduction in carbon dioxide compared with other, other, well, it doesn't specify which fuels, except in a general kind of way, but it never talks about the methane, which is a much more potent greenhouse gas. So that omission seems like an act of commission to me, that they, it's very convenient to ignore that fact. No one has really addressed price volatility, so I want to bring that up, which is just that if we have this glut of natural gas, more than the country could use, and we build export terminals where we were going to build import terminals some years ago, then if we're increasing, if the demand goes up, but we set it up so, if the supply goes up, but we increase the demand by shipping it overseas, then where's this price going to settle down? So that I, I would question price in terms of price volatility. So there's price, there's obviously the externalities in terms of environmental concerns, and then there's what Karen brought up, and there's a quick statistic that goes with that. I'm not going to give you the numbers, but they basically say that we have five times more proven reserves of fossil fuels already than we can burn without currently tipping the climate balance. So that, I'm just suggesting, what Karen's saying, which is that we consider, if we're considering New Pulse as part of the community that wants to transition toward a greener, a greener, more sustainable way of living, that to consider moving away from fossil fuels rather than switching to one that isn't even any cleaner than coal, because that's, that's what they, when they look at the greenhouse gas emissions, it's no cleaner than coal, which was, I mean, I was shocked drilling down into it, but, or going, going into the studies, but it really isn't. So the only thing you're looking at is price, and price is volatile. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, go ahead.
Just very quickly, just want to support what Karen Catters said about the governor. The town and the village both passed resolutions against fracking, and so we consider ourselves a frack-free community. And the truth of the matter is that everybody who's been fighting this battle for a long time is counting their blessings every day that we don't permit fracking in New York State. We're consistently watching Governor Cuomo at every step of the way to make sure that he continues to not allow fracking. And so New Pulse, it really is very, very critical, and we are working with the governor's office right now to hopefully try to start to use New Pulse as a model for a renewable future, and show how we could really lead the state and then ultimately the nation. And so honestly, for whatever reason, if the village government should actually allow natural gas in the village hall, we're actually undermining everything we've stood for as a community in terms of how we believe this battle is, so it only contradicts everything that we're, we're doing. So I would implore you to consider this really seriously, and hopefully rescind it, and we will all applaud you, and thank you.
I was able to find a spreadsheet to give a cost evaluation of hydro fracking, I'm sorry, gas compared with geothermal, that might be handy to look at. I have a confession and an apology. The confession is that I was somewhat gleeful when I heard about the vote. The apology is that a small part of that--
You're gleeful, but you--
That I was somewhat gleeful when I heard about the vote. And a small part, only a small part, is what I'm apologizing for, that's my own personal sins. But the larger part was that it really gave evidence to the conundrum of all of the things that are going on here with climate change, with economics, with preserving the planet. I also have to tell you that I look at everything through a planetary lens, if I could word it that way. And that actually comes before my family, my community, and my species. And so what I say is probably a little bit on the warped side, maybe very warped, but I think that unless we can adopt a lens like that for some of what we're looking at, that everything we do is, is null and void. And when I look through this lens, we just have to stop using fossil fuels. There is no good fossil fuel, there is no clean fossil fuel, and by going to gas, we are going to, the fuel that we're using, believe it or not, is electricity. We have a million BTUs in our boilers, that's all run electrically, which is unfortunate because it's expensive, but it's fortunate in that half of the electricity last year was non-fossil fuel. It was mostly, actually, nuclear, and there was a certain percentage of wind, a certain percentage of hydro. But that put it over the 50% mark, and the rest was a little bit of coal and a fair amount of gas. So we're actually going from more than 50% non-fossil fuels to-- So we're actually going from more than 50% non-fossil fuels to 100% fossil fuels if we make this decision. I, I can't, that lens won't let me live with that. It's just unconscionable to me to go in that direction. The other thing, and Miriam touched on it, but I really feel that before we make any decision, we have to get our house in order. This is the best part of the complex here, and it was built in 1979. It's under insulated, the ceilings are R30. Today, in this zone, we should have R49. It's all ceilings upstairs, you might notice. We have a thermal bloody nose, that's less than R2, that skylight. I'd give that up, and I'd lower the ceiling, and I'd fill it with insulation. That thermostat, I have now come in here five times, no meeting going on, and it's been set at 68 degrees, with nobody here and nobody coming here. We could change that thermostat to a motion detector that will not run unless somebody is in the room, and before the bill comes to the village hall, you're talking about payback, that new thermostat could be paid for. I also sat here, I ran it up to 73, and then I wanted to see how long it took to get it back down to 70, and it took seven minutes. So we don't need to pre-cool or even pre-warm these rooms. So, and we're, we're talking about, most of this complex was built in the 50s and 60s, so this is the best of the best right here. Most of it probably doesn't have any insulation. So what I would recommend is that we really do a thorough analysis. We did have an energy audit, I have a copy of it, thanks to Katie, and it is very cursory. They described it as a walkthrough, and it was literally that. But we need an energy audit that's really thorough. And, Dr. Pasqual Strokey, I don't know if some, you know, he would be excellent to do it, because he's in New Pauls and he's, he's just terrific. And then, once we get our, and Miriam mentioned that we need to get things tight, we need to get things insulated before we consider anything. And then, I, my sense is that if we explore all of the different ways of heating and cooling, that we're going to come up with geothermal. Because geothermal is 100% efficient. For every dollar you put into geothermal, you get $4 worth of energy, because it's the heat that's down on the ground, and you're basically just paying for a pump. I hear you're looking to, to buy a generator. I'd love to see the generator that can generate a million BTUs of energy to heat this place, whereas the pump to run the geothermal, you know, is almost, almost like a household kind of generator. So my feeling is that you really should consider going that way. I spoke to an expert the other day, he said it's the only way today that anyone, especially a commercial enterprise, can get to zero net energy. And you could actually have that pump run by the solar panels that are out there. And I think that we're already hooked up, obviously, to do the electric. I think that that might be the way to go, but it certainly should be included in the mix. Thank you for listening.
How are you doing, everybody? Excuse me, my name is Michael Katz, I live and work here in the village. Absolutely agree that, you know, fossil fuels, it's a thing of the past. Renewable energy is absolute direction we need to be going in. Geothermal, very efficient, wind, solar, hydroelectric. I'm not going to get too far into it right now, but I would very much, on another occasion, love the opportunity to make a presentation before the board. I am representative of an energy supply company, and they have a mission of sustainability, sustainability, sustainability. In less than four years that the company's been around, they've already prevented, excuse me, avoided over 2 billion pounds of carbon emissions. And that's it, with a customer base of less than 350,000 so far, that's spread off across 10 states. And not only are they having this kind of impact, but they're also saving people money in the process. And I think it would be very worthwhile for the village to consider how we could not only cut our costs down, but also be sourcing our electric from renewables sources. So, by all means, I'm available, and I would love to have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I'm going to recommend an energy audit.
Absolutely, yeah.
Will the chair give you that point of information? Not sure if you work under our rules, but I would like to give you supportive information. Can you accept that?
No.
Thanks. So a comment was made, and after I sat down, there was a response to that comment. I just have a point of information. Conflict of interest is governed by the appearance of a conflict, not what's in someone's heart. An example I would give is if someone owns a property, and that property's assessment might be affected by the letting of natural gas alarms. I think access to natural gas, if I understand it, does have an effect on the assessed value of a property. And so I mean nothing personal whatsoever, the standard's the appearance. And if I offended anyone, I apologize, but I wanted to put that point of information out, it's the appearance of conflict rather than what's in someone's heart. And I apologize if anyone was offended by the statement.
Sure. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
A quick appreciation of you as green people, daylighting the string in peace park. Here, here.
Let hope it comes in under bid.
I'm, I'm sure it will. Okay. So, as you, I'm sure most of you know already, Arianna and I had a discussion following the meeting when that decision was made. And we definitely agreed that, like Katie said, we should not have come so quickly to a decision. I agree with the second meeting rule, that it was not made public in terms of the issue being on our agenda in adequate time. It was presented us, to us, the day of the meeting. I quickly was able to go through the documents that were handed to us, and in retrospect, we did not authorize signature of those contracts. Therefore, I called our DPW superintendent and informed him of that, and requested that he not move forward until we were able to revisit this, this topic and decision. And I have been in contact with our village attorney, who did advise that we can reverse the decision, providing we make a clear statement of reasons for doing so on the record.
I have a, I have that long list of reasons why it would be a good idea for us to rescind the motion. One of the main things that I think was brought up here was the idea that we are, that we, this was a fiscal decision in many ways. So of course I went to the independent statistics analysis of the U.S. Energy Information Administration, and it talks about how, there's an article there, which the village board was provided with, that natural gas prices rise with an expected increase in production costs after 2015. With a buyback period of 4.65 years, even if we started and did this conversion today, the cost of natural gas is going to rise during our projected buyback period, which means that it will be a longer buyback period than it is initially projected as. And I think if our basis for making this decision is fiscal, then that negates it right then and there, because there are other things that we have not yet looked at, which maybe, maybe when we looked into them, we would decide, we can't afford this in any way, shape, or form. Obviously, I don't believe that. But if we decided that, then at least we would have done our due diligence as representatives of this progressive community with anti-fracking legislation in place. So I think that would be enough of a reason for me, without any of the environmental causes and effects that this, this would have impact on. That would be enough of a reason for me to rescind the vote. But I also looked into a number of other things as well, including us doing an energy audit. Our last energy audit was done in 2004, which is nine years ago. I called Pat Courtney Strong and asked her about this, and exactly what Dan said is what I read. It was a brief walkthrough, and where they kind of just identified that we needed to change our light bulbs and our thermostats. And so, and some of the things that were mentioned there, like our boilers, I spoke with the Blue also, have been replaced since. So the boilers were replaced between 2008 and 2012, according to the Blue DFW superintendent, and this was done before that. So we, and none of it was blower tests or things about air exchange or air leakage, or what insulation to do for our building. So I think the number one thing we need to do is look at reducing our energy needs before we look at reducing our energy costs, even if we decide that this is the right path, which I will vote against, even if everybody votes in favor of it again. But so I, I would like to also share with everybody a newspaper article that a former chemistry teacher at the Highland High School provided to me about the mirage of a growing fuel supply. And it's essentially pure mathematics. And it's the idea that if we, if our oil consumption, this was about oil, because this, when this article was given out to his chemistry students, it was before the natural gas boom, but it applies equally. It's the idea that our consumption rates will be growing at an equal percentage or higher percentage each year, so that even if, even if we found an additional 1,000-year supply, if we have a 5% increase in usage every year, the answer for that 1,000-year supply at that same growth rate will only last us 79 years. So mathematically, drilling more oil is a losing game, is what this article says. This was just given to me last night, which is why I didn't have a copy for everyone here until right now. But I thought it was actually a very interesting article, because it was really just relying on percentages of mathematics and increasing rates, and that the idea of us reducing our needs is actually the only way to make our supplies last longer. And the best way to reduce our needs is to go to some kind of renewable energy.
Any other discussion?
Well, when Arianna, here's my only point of discussion right now. When Arianna called me, I said I would be perfectly open, without embarrassment, perfectly open to reconsider an issue like this, or any other issue. I had never in my life thought that a decision made either by me or with my input was the last decision that could be made. I never thought that, I believe, even as a child. I certainly have not thought that as a mature adult. And I happen to be the most mature adult in this group.
I'm catching up.
You may be, but you have a ways to go. So I would consider any issue over again, as long as there's a reason to consider it over again. Present me with reasons to consider it, I will consider it. And that's the position I'm taking right now.
Spoken like a true philosopher.
But I would like to suggest.
I hope that's true.
I agree with that.
I would like to suggest that we move to do the energy audit, because I believe that will in a sense suggest a certain direction. And you agree?
No, I, I think that given the two meeting rules, we should suggest now that this be put on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes. Well done, Tom. Speaking to that effect, I did reach out to Pat Courtney Strong, and I got two with Pasqual Strokey being a third person that we can ask for bids regarding that. So I'll put that on our next, I only got this email yesterday, so I will put that on our next agenda, and say that we should, you know, request some bids. And from what I-
We also need to put on reconsideration.
From, from what I know, it'll only cost us about $1,000 to do the energy audit, because my sort of funding for such things, free energy audits, has dried up. So I think, and, I mean, I obviously believe that's $1,000 well spent.
Obviously.
Obviously. So, so Katie, if you'd be so kind to make sure that this is on our August 28 agenda, both the idea of, I guess reopening this to being rescinded, as well as energy auditors' request for proposal.
Making note of it right now.
Wonderful.
Yeah, there was one other thing that I wanted to bring up about the packet that we got at the last meeting on this topic. We, you know, one of the main reasons why we get our packets in a timely matter is so that we can read through everything. Having something handed to us at a meeting does not allow that. And when I was able to go through the pack, that information again, there were two items within the documents which weren't on the cover page, which included total numbers. One being a piece of equipment that was somewhere between, I believe, somewhere between $1,000 and $2,000, that wasn't included in the, the total. And also, it clearly stated that there was not an amount being projected for removal of, of the existing fuel tanks, which would need to be done, and who knows how much that would have caused. So that, those were also reasons why, you know, I really felt very uncomfortable with, with moving forward with, with the whole-
Just to clarify something, I think the recommendation was keeping the tanks as backup. Sure, there'd be a problem, so that would not be a risk. But the other issues that have been raised, I think, are very legitimate, and we should probably explore, explore everything. But some things are going to cost a lot more, and we do have to heat buildings. And an energy audit, I think, is a very good idea. And Rosalyn, I hope you're right. I hope there is consolidation, but the consolidation plan calls for the use of this building and town hall, no matter what we do in the future governmentally, has to be dealt with. Okay?
All right. So do we want to go to a vote, or are we, are you suggesting we wait until the next meeting? I thought you were, next meeting, okay. Okay. So on our agenda for the next meeting?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking to this issue.
I would like to move and leave table until the next meeting, when the attorney can be present, the whole discussion of the local law in terms of short-term rights. And I felt the lead that we, our planner has had a chance to comment on the attorney's proposal, and I would like that opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll move to table.
Second.
Thank you.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so that, that's number 10. And in terms of the, did I not say parking memo, Kurt? Did you want to?
I'll do that, and but let's do revolving loan fund, and I will move to accept the revolving loan.
Yes. I, I second. I just have one little correction that I'll hand over to Katie. Basically, this should be a separate line.
Oh, yeah. I think there was formatting issues. Oh, I did actually have one other thing. Sally's last name is still wrong.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you see there that, my little squiggle there? That means a separate line.
Okay.
So we need, oh.
Okay. We're trying to do that, sorry.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five men break.
I'm waiting, I actually have, well, when you come back, I have two tiny little housekeeping issues to take over from the consent agenda.
Wonderful resource in the Rosedale, they have one geothermal.
Yes, yes.
Yes, thank you very much.
We're ecstatic about it.
Do you know, Dan, do you know who did, who did the geothermal work at Rosedale?
Yes. So if we can add you to the geo gen.
Hang up. How long was this? All right. Lloyd, the Hamilton.
How are you? Thank you, Mike. Okay. Well, I'd like to get proposals on exactly that, you know, geothermal, what it would
take to have, I mean, maybe after the energy audit, that would be the next step, but I would love to do that, that's ideal.
And if a company is, if we need a volunteer to go into small skinny spaces when we're doing the energy audit, you said that you enjoy sort of going around, especially across Waltham.
Small, you, small skinny spaces.
It's like keating.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dan.
Rebecca, just to keep you in the loop, when we come back, I officially need to know on the consent agenda if you're accepting the end of the request to waive the insurance? Or that- or the park event. And we have to name the fact that we're authorizing the $10 for Arianna.
$10, oh, yes, yes, yes.
When it's finally, I have to...
Yes, that's fine, okay.
I'm sorry, I should have looked at it at the time, but I want to make sure that we're all covered.
Yes.
And we're going to need to do a roll call for the other side.
Yes.
Well, we are still on camera, although we're on site, so.
Yes, thank you.
I'm going to check to see where my babies are.
Okay, I'm very excited. And I started knowing, which is a good...
Yeah, I didn't know you'd tell that, and I'm excited.
And also, get together.
We don't have, we don't have...
All right, well, we're so bad, there you have it.
Yeah.
When they first came out.
I think I did, yes. A lot of them.
It was 18 years ago.
Well, that's good, Dan. I didn't know. I'm glad you heard that.
Well, I knew.
Well, you know, I don't have censorship issue with the language, but I can see it's something my family...
Okay, cool, absolutely.
Nice to see you, Dan.
Nice to be seen, nice to be seen.
Yeah, you know, I saw a comment, speaking, when you were saying about how we should have podiums. I saw a comment, I just had to be looking at the New York Times contact page and there were comments on it about how people can't hear the sound. And Ron Turner made a comment saying, nobody's complained, nobody complained about that when I was doing the sound. And I said, well, you know, maybe we should, you know, we've talked about a number of different ways of reading things. Is he the one? I didn't know, okay. Well, isn't there a way that we could do exactly what the town board does, set up the microphones?
Do you need one more, one more line with a microphone? Either pass it around the audience or put a podium up front?
Well, even like having microphones at our table, you know, do we need to, do we need to allocate funds into that?
No, no, we can have one more of these and that's it. Sit there, it should. I'm sorry.
All right.
Or have one more of those and put them on the podium.
How do we make that happen?
What are you making them?
Well, to put up one more microphone.
Can we get a wireless?
Well, I'd love to have, have...
We could have one more thing called a splitter, which would split this into two lines and one more microphone, which should do it.
Well, but don't people complain about not being curious with these? And it would be like best to have an actual...
Well, yeah, if you all had your own individual microphone with a stand at your face, you know, it's a good enough.
Yeah.
Well, you can hear the people at the board table in the future.
I, I watch every meeting at least twice, I never have a problem hearing any of them.
Okay, all right, good.
It's out there.
Yeah, okay. Well, so then if we had a podium with the, like how you described it...
Or how about a wireless?
Could we do wireless?
Sure. That just, that just needs another piece of equipment to receive it.
Right, right.
It's just, it's just, it's only had enough jacks over the thing over here.
There's a sink in there.
Let's get a, well, we need...
Cool. Thank you, Don.
It tells him that we will act on the policy procedures as we meet in the law, essentially. Yeah. And I do, I thought, well, he said, number five, and it sounded great idea for telling us that.
It never became adopted, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think it's like up to you and I to make that happen.
Yes.
In, in reality.
I agree.
So I didn't know if we were taking a break. I, yeah, I didn't either. All right. We're almost done.
I know. Oh, yeah. Geez. Usually Jason wants it, because he also is... That's really, it's like, no, it's not a party thing, you've got to figure out where to... They can't go more than maybe an hour and a half.
When I came here, I didn't, I didn't come from...
That just would never really occur to me.
Yeah, well, I only, I mean, I only know because they're always...
Right.
You know, I don't like surprises.
Hey, I was just texting you. And I feel like we're so close, it's like we're almost home.
It was lively.
About what?
About everything. But no, we had a, the whole magic at the public comment.
Katie, yes, ma'am. All the people we... This can get one bit... We're going to do, we're going to put out a document as well as... So what we should be moving on? Right, what do we got? What, we got the...
Yeah, because of, because of the SUNY rule.
Interim zoning.
Which you may or may not choose to go forward on.
Right, both the bond and if Jason's in on the three votes.
And that bothers you.
I didn't know. In a way, I believe that there's one prepared, I'm going to leave it, we'll be...
I admire it.
It is very force, it's the significance to...
Katie.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you get Kurt, Neil Kurt, coffee of the short-term proposal that Joe sent to the boards?
Sure.
He doesn't have it.
I'm sorry, I would...
Of short-term rentals.
Oh.
Kurt was supposed to be on that.
He never got it. Well, you know, we actually thought we'd consent to Joe.
Yes, we did.
Yes, I absolutely did.
Now...
Okay.
I'll include this in the...
So, did you... Oh, right, it said they're forwarding them, okay, good. All right, that's good, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I didn't get, that's the one I gave. Yes, thank you.
I sent it to Kurt.
I'm so sorry.
Because Kurt was supposed to be in on that planning, who did not have received it.
So we've really only got, what have we got left on our agenda? We've got the Huguenot street parking.
The two laws.
You turn the...
No, you put them, you put those on as the consent agenda.
Oh, we did.
The two laws, yeah.
You did two laws for the consent agenda. You have, if you have two tiny little housekeeping issues, the roll call for the bond day, the part off-street parking, you have to decide whether or not you're going to go ahead with the extension for the interim zoning.
No, no, we did, we have the moratorium to do.
Yeah, that's the interim.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we back?
It's a, only have two more things to do, right?
A little more than that, let's do the house, yeah, let's do the housekeeping first. One piece that Katie brought up was the request for a waiver on insurance for the park use request, which was in our consent agenda. We got the request on the table from Donna Biedman. And I don't have a problem with that.
Neither do I.
Well, but I'm going back to what you said about things being in the packet.
I didn't have it till Monday, so...
And that is, you know, you want things in the packet.
Yes.
All right, I'll make an exception for this.
Well, well, the event itself was in the packet. Yeah, it was.
The waiver was not.
I did ask for the waiver shortly after receiving the park use request.
I'm not blaming you.
I know. I, I did follow up when I had not received it in time for the packet.
What do you want to do with that? Just waive it?
Uh, yeah, I, I think we should just waive it and, you know, obviously, none of us had a problem with it being on the consent agenda to approve. And it was obvious that there was, because I had the insurance.
Was it included? Because it's supposed to...
Well, it wasn't in the...
It wasn't checked.
Yeah, it wasn't checked on the whole.
Yeah, definitely wasn't checked.
All right, in the future, though, I think we have to know it all ahead of time. I'm moving the waiver.
A second.
Aye.
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 Okay. And now on to...
Oh, wait, and we actually have to state that you're author, that you're okaying the $10 for the volunteer fair.
Oh, yes, yes, a money item.
Um, I have to think about this.
Who wants the table with me?
I'm fine, I will. It sounds like fun.
It's fun.
I love to, yeah.
I don't think, yeah.
It's, it's going to the SUNY volunteer fair, it's $10 per participant actually.
I'll move it.
And it's making sure that we can go and get more volunteers from the campus.
Okay.
Does anyone else want to go? Is it an additional $10 if others want to go?
I think, I think you could, we can all just, yeah. Whoever wants to be there is fine. I think it's for the lunch.
I got mine.
Aye.
What about their housekeeping?
Roll call for the bond.
Okay. I make a motion to move the bond.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, it's roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call.
So, Deputy Mayor, aye?
Aye.
Uh, trust me.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay, you're okay. I think, I think we heard us all. So why don't we go ahead with the parking issue? Thank you. Thank you for sitting through the meeting.
Oh, you're very welcome.
And thank you, Drew, for giving the...
We didn't, we didn't move this right before, which, the, the parking, are you going to ask me?
We haven't done it yet, no.
I thought we just moved that.
No, we did stop signs and we added the stop sign.
Stop signs and disabled person parking.
And the handy...
Yeah, and, and this is, this is a discussion presentation from Kurt, not, I don't believe we're making action.
We asked Kurt to tell us whether this was a good recommendation.
I know, I read his memo.
And I'm going to move that we call a hearing and make, and have our attorney give us the proper legal language for amending the no parking law.
Sounds fine.
And thank you for a very thorough recommendation.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
So, I moved it.
I mean, I'll second it, but does Kurt want to, I mean, he sat through our whole meeting, do you want to...
He likes it when we...
I think there, there's still the, the matter of the interim, the interim zoning law extension, so...
Okay.
But I have no, I have no regrets about, actually, there was a lot, a lot said that was, that was informative and interesting.
All right, cool.
So can we...
I mean, is there any discussion on, does anybody have any reasons why or why not?
Well, you know what, do you want to go ahead and just give a briefing on it since we've got the public here?
Certainly, of course.
They've been here, they know what...
And of course, the first thing I noted is that there is now, there is now no, no parking or standing anytime from Maine, from Huguenot, from Maine, and then north to Broadhead. And at that point, then, there is, there is parking allowed. There is, of course, the, the church in that vicinity, however, there is, there is parking, and actually, it's free, public parking, in cases of the two lots, Broadhead and the one alongside the Walcol. And it is a short walk. And of course, we still allow traffic, at least for now, in that area, so therefore, if someone, if parties wanted to be dropped off, they, they could still do so.
Okay.
So with, with that, and also, I'm noting this, the, the length is 20 to 25 feet, varying on Huguenot between North and Mulberry Street. And so, of course, cars parked in this area can present an impediment which, in some cases, could be serious if there just happens to be the wrong, you're, you're walking in the wrong place or riding a bike in the wrong place at the right time, but then it could be slightly dangerous, yeah. So I, I support the initiative to demand parking in this area.
And thank you for a very good recommendation.
Okay. So we've already made the motion to send it to the attorney.
Have the attorney grant instead of hearing, when will hearing be?
Well, you would have to have the legislation before you could set a public hearing, so... So if we could request it, Kurt, if you could send on your recommendation and request that Joe drafted the legislation?
Yeah.
And then we can, we can review it our next meeting, hopefully?
Right, and Joe will be here at the next meeting. Conceivably, you could have a public hearing on the 11th, the 18th, or the...
Well, not the 11th.
Right, I know, it's a dedicated meeting, so that you could have it on the 18th if you wanted to.
Why not?
You, you can't have a public hearing until you have the legislation.
We have often set a hearing before we have the draft in front of us.
I don't think that's, why?
Well, there's no reason to.
There's plenty of time between, between the 28th and the 18th to properly do all the...
But make sure we have...
The noticing.
I, I'm already...
They're on it. Thank you, okay. Aye.
I just have a quick question, I totally support this, I think it's a wonderful idea. I don't know if you're applying, you haven't been here. Overnight parking in the church or parking lot or, you know, I mean, is that, how's that going to be handled?
Overnight parking for whom?
In the church parking lot.
Right, that's not what I'm thinking.
That's owned by the Huguenot Historical Society, or is it...
It's owned by the church.
It's a church, that's not part of it.
A big lot is owned half by the church and half by the historical society. The lot on the west side by the church is the church's.
Okay, well, then, that's, that's not something that we control, that the village controls.
I mean, right now, I don't think there is overnight parking.
You mean, the church may not, the congregation may not have the, have had the occasion to...
Church has never gone all night, so you don't have a problem with the church having overnight parking.
No, I'm just curious, you know, I'm just thinking about, okay, so now we have no parking on the street if people are having friends or relatives coming in and wanting to stay overnight, you know, stay overnight, where are they going to park?
Well, a lot of you all have long drive-thrus.
I mean, I, yes.
Well, of course, this is, these issues are on, you know, different sides of the very same coin.
I mean, and police, I, I fully support this.
Then I don't, I don't worry about it.
Well, how about, how about this, what about the, our, our board head lottery? Are, are folks allowed to park overnight if they're, if they're visiting someone and there's no parking on the street?
Not in my, on Flatco Avenue.
No, I would...
You cannot park at all.
Just like in front of my house.
Okay. And on Saturday and Sunday.
Since we're talking about a very specific location, it's not very far from the parking ride. There could be more clearly defined relationship to overnight parking with the parking ride, and that way you could, you could suggest, yes, hey, let, let me drive up and I'll drive you back.
Good point. Thank you. It's because you know that somebody is going to come up with that and say...
Well, there's, there's no doubt that for those, for those occasions, graduations and and occasions of all sorts, what we have done is, and by the way, it's not, generally speaking, it's not, it's an uneasy situation, but I guess mostly in suburban areas, I'm thinking neighborhoods deal with it, most of the time because they know their neighbors and they know the occasions. And this is what is difficult to sometimes discern and force as far as parking enforcement or voting enforcement.
I'm not trying to be...
No, I know, but it's a fair, it's not, it's not, it's a realistic...
But I think Katie has your...
Right.
We'll just have to, our office will contact the, and find out what, how one would go about making arrangements for overnight parking, and it will just become one of those little things that we have available when someone calls and asks.
I know there is, I believe there's a maybe three-day limit in that lot, at the parking ride.
I have to, I have an actual clarification to give you a good...
Yeah, the picturesqueness of there, just the beautiful...
And of course, even the width of the street doesn't, it's not, it's not safe passage. I know that folk, neighborhoods just simply do their best to put up with it.
Especially in that corner.
I know, it's really funny that people don't know, don't live there.
We, your people, joggers at midnight with lights on.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Five in the morn, no, emergency room nurses, Debbie...
I wish you two would stop that behavior.
You know, we have like a nurse on the street who works nights as an emergency room nurse, and she's walking her dog at five in the morning, and she's, I mean, the amount of dogs, joggers, bikers, you know...
Yeah, just walkers.
Just walkers, I mean, it's as after midnight. Oh, yeah. Because of the streets full all the time, it's like the song.
Okay, moving on.
We have to vote, we have to vote.
Oh, so you're sorry.
You did vote to send it to the attorney. You did vote to send it to the attorney.
Yeah, we did, yeah, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Last item, isn't it? Number 12. Approval of the extension for the interim zoning law.
For this, you would have to have a supermajority. Because the planning board has not given it a non-favorable, the county planning board has given it a non-favorable response.
Do we have...
That's, we don't have their response in writing.
Correct, I have not seen, it wouldn't come to me.
He said we had to have supermajority.
That's correct.
The village, I didn't say that.
Privy to the decision they made. However, we haven't received it, but I have no doubt that that is indeed true.
What about village planning board?
Oh, they did not issue a recommendation at the meeting. It was on their agenda, however, they wished to have, well, actually, they wanted to consider it more, and they asked how long they had, and so, they, of course, have 45 days. They don't wish to utilize the 45 days just for the sake of it, but they do wish to discuss it again next Tuesday at their meeting on the 20th.
I would gloss a little on that. There was some seriously expressed skepticism about a moratorium. There are people on the planning board who are generally not in favor of such moratorium, and they were wondering why this needed to be extended, given that we had the moratorium in the first place. So, they have not made a recommendation, but the discussion would lead you to believe that at least there was significant skepticism.
But you would still need a supermajority. That would override what the planning board...
Now, of course, and I understand where the county is coming from. We'll see when we get the written comments.
Question for you, Kurt. If the board does not vote tonight to extend this moratorium, is my understanding that we will have to start again?
Well, no, I mean, we went through the same process to extend it. In other words, there was really no shortcut, there was no shortcut available in extending it. What would happen is that in the time, we would be waiting for the Department of State to simply say, this is okay for filing. During that period, September 12th, the end of the current moratorium, may come and go.
That's what I meant.
I'm sorry.
So, if we're gonna act, we have to act tonight in order for the majority to continue.
That's true. Now, I did, you know, I was instructed to provide this. The mayor said, you know, please provide this in time for it not to expire first. And I did, however, of course, I did in other reports about the status of rezoning and master planning, I did mention that they don't make moratoriums long enough to cover, I mean, for example, we zoned the B3 because we had good comprehensive planning in place that was done approximately in '05 to '07. We don't have comprehensive planning in place for the property we just annexed, and I've been asked to bring forth proposed legislation that would sort of either mandate or be inclined towards mixed use. There's going to need to be a body of comprehensive planning that's adopted before we can adopt the zoning. There is no basis right now in the record or in a master plan. So, we're at a point where to undertake a master plan and recodify, they simply don't make or tolerate moratoriums long enough for that. In other words, not two and a half years. And we began in, well, of course, March is when this one went into effect. I guess what I'm saying is really that at this point, we're, I recommend beginning the update of the master plan because we don't have comprehensive planning in place to...
That's on the agenda for a proposal from you for the moratorium.
Yeah.
But that doesn't, that's not the point. Pointing that you need a vote tonight for this to continue. As we all know, I am opposed to the moratorium, and I'm opposed to the moratorium because we did not heed the promise that we made prior to your hiring. And Ariana and I have talked about this today. And I know the rest of the board feels the moratorium is important, but I think it is very important that we deal with the annexed property expertisically, as we promised you before you were hired, we have done B3. If we can, and I'll need your help on how to do this, if we can pull out the annexed property and say that that will be the first order of business to come before this board in terms of the next proposal, I will vote for the moratorium. If you can promise that over tomorrow.
It is the next, however, so far, in my discussions with the mayor, he said he expects something that either requires mixed-use development on this annexed property or is strongly inclined towards it, so what I would...
But this isn't mayor's choice.
No, that's why I say, that's the only, well, I say that because it's the only conversation I've had so far. It would not be at all my first recommendation to rezone that for mixed use. It's an established residential area, and I happen to think there ought to be infill along Main Street, and Main Street is only a stone's throw from the annexed property on the other side of the woods.
But my question is, is it possible to make the annexed property the next issue of priority for you with discussion with the developer and you, and not argue and pose, and that that will come before this board within the month? And then, if that's possible, and we can qualify the moratorium, and I'll need your wording on that. I told Ariana, I will support the moratorium because you need four votes to go.
I understand, and it certainly is the next item of priority, but it's probably, this is an opportunity, I'm sorry, let me look.
Well, I have no question that we could word a resolution that would continue a moratorium, or the moratorium, with an exception. We're writing a law, in effect, or we're extending the law. And there's no reason why the law cannot have an exception. We make exceptions frequently to laws.
I just need the correct word.
That's different. I'm not willing to say that I know what the correct word should be right offhand.
You said that the current moratorium ends on September 12th?
Yeah.
That's, okay. Would there be any reason not to? I'm just looking at the calendar. Pardon?
I think we're getting to, and I, that's my concession, and I will happily vote for the moratorium.
So, when we say, 'cause I know we did talk about this, when we say exception, would it be that this property is no longer, no longer falls under the moratorium? Because you and I talked about making it the priority instead of the exception, so that it would just be the very first thing that we are releasing from the moratorium?
Yeah, but there's no guarantee adopting the moratorium unless we qualify by saying whatever it is that I need to say.
Yes, by the way, this is an important point that I haven't really had opportunity to mention other than my discussions with the mayor about what kind of legislation I'd bring forth for the newly annexed property on Henry, and that is that there's untold work to do to justify a mandatory or encouraging of mixed use on that site. Whereas, I have met with the owner, and actually, he and I met months ago, and of course, he said, I'm happy the way it's owned now. So, that's the owner's position. That's not my position, it's the owner's position. It just so happens that even that R1 designation offers with special permitting such things as the ability to cluster or have additional density if it's, for example, senior housing, which I do think there's a need for, especially independent living. Again, that's a different creature than woodland pond. Woodland pond is different altogether. So, I guess what I'm saying is, I would be untold work to work on mixed use, and at this point, I'm not sure what the board would like to see for that property.
But why would we have to decide that since whatever recommendations you might make would still have to be approved by the board? Would they not?
I guess, okay, I guess I'm wondering whether I'm abiding by the mayor's wishes or orders to me and going ahead and preparing something that really emphasizes mixed use and commercial development there.
Here's my understanding, so does not forgive anything. You have to figure that out. But here's what my understanding is. My understanding is that we have a proposal on the table to extend a moratorium. We do not, at the present time, have a supermajority to do that. We could do that if we made some exception to the NIFIN annexation. By saying that, we would then, I'm saying, I'm suggesting, I have not yet made any motion, I'm just suggesting, that we would exclude the NIFIN annexation from the moratorium, and we would direct you to prepare a proposal for our consideration for zoning that property, and I would not even put a time, you know, within the next, I would not want to say within the next two weeks or within the next, because then the mayor's gonna come back, and you're gonna have discussions with the mayor about this anyhow, and then you'll, you still have to present to the board the change in zoning for that property if there is to be a change.
That's right. That really clarifies the bit that I was possibly making a little bit confusing. In other words, I'm happy to use my own expertise to propose something that I think is appropriate. But I do have to mention that at least, you know, the mayor has informed me of his wishes for the zoning of that property, but I understand, I will take it upon myself to prepare. And you're absolutely right, that's...
I just want to clarify, that's one vote, there are four right here.
Right. And I agree wholeheartedly, there will be time for the full board to consider.
He worded the right way.
Yes, it helped clarify what I think I was...
So, do you wanna...
Well, no, is this, is what I said both understandable, for example, might not be even understandable, is understandable as well as acceptable?
Well, I still, the question I had before is still my question of what language, you know, what you're saying, I think, you know, with Kurt having to present to us, what we may or may not do with the annexed property still has to come before the board. But when it does, with the current moratorium in place, we would hash it out, we'd vote on it, and then the moratorium would be lifted from this anyway. So, I think just making sure that that is a priority would mean, no.
No, that's what Kurt said. We do have to accept it out. And he was asking for direction because the mayor has told him it must be a certain thing.
Well, why does it have to be accepted out?
Actually, that, I'm not quite sure. In other words, my job is to make this the next...
Well, I was proposing that in order to assure that we get the votes that we need.
I see what you're saying, okay. Because the thing about it is that we would have to, and this is where I would get hung up. Because the current zoning is the kind of zoning that the property owner would build under and be happy to build under, it means that if we accept it from the moratorium, that could start tomorrow, and then whatever zoning we...
September 12th.
No.
Actually, September 12th.
Yeah, okay, September 12th. Which actually, that would be the thing, is that we would have to move quickly, and I would not hold my breath, that we would be able to move that quickly on our decision as to what we would like to actually zone this property as. Especially because I think that there is disagreement among the board members as to what it should be.
I remind the board, Rebecca and Tom weren't with us when we did this. The R1 designation for that property was put there as a stopgap.
It was a hold, yes.
It was a holding pattern, and we, this board, for whatever reason or other, did not take it out of the holding pattern and deal with it. Now, it's covered by the moratorium. So, I think, I'm telling you, or if I'm right or wrong, and Tom, you've had planning board experience, so...
Well, I remember this very issue from my time on the planning board.
Right.
So, while I was not on this board, that issue came before us for our consideration.
So, do we pass the moratorium with the annexed property as the first priority that you must deal with, or do we take the annexed property out of the moratorium, which may give you more time to deal with? Which is the way we should do it, Kurt?
Look, I see it's apt. It's apt for me to continue under the existing priorities, which is that this particular property is absolutely a priority after the enactment, which has been accomplished of the B3. So, that stands as a priority and one of them...
There were mixed messages, and I just want to be assured by this board, if I'm gonna support the moratorium, what the majority wants, I can hold it up by voting no tonight. I don't want to do that. I want assurance that the next order of business is the NIFIN property.
It is.
Well, how do you assure that? My own position on this is that the way to assure that is to take it out of the moratorium. If you say that you want it to be the first priority, if we extend this moratorium for an additional six months, then that means from September 12th to March 12th, there will be nothing done on that property. There won't be any, that property with all the other properties will remain undeveloped.
Well, until, the whole thing with the moratorium is that when we, as we go, like the B3 rezoning, when we made a decision on that, had the public hearing, and then changed the zoning codes, it becomes released from the moratorium.
So, the thing is, B3 was never in the moratorium.
Right, I think that's true.
It was in the moratorium.
I have to admit, you know, it was, what I did was, I removed it in this extension of the moratorium. What happened was, we went down a path that was fairly complex, and I did not realize at the time that I would propose my first draft, which I completely accept that it was not fit for adoption. But the first draft was submitted in October of 2012. It was probably the fourth or fifth iteration, was approved in June of this year. So, knowing with that behind me now, and having that hindsight, I would say I'm very concerned about from the time of the first draft on any district to its acceptance or to its enactment.
So...
So, it was in there. What's happening now is, we just happened to, the expiration of the initial moratorium and the enactment of the B3 just happened to coincide. So, I was able to take care of these two items at once by revising this moratorium to remove the B3, and all the other districts remained.
So, I want to do what Tom was recommending. Take it out, it's a priority, and vote for it, and vote for it.
But then what do we do if it starts to be built upon while we're trying to change the zoning?
No, what would happen is, but Ariana's point is well taken, but I'll just say that what'll happen is, we'll get an application, and once that application is complete to the planning board, if, and if that is not rezoned by that time, which we all know has procedures in addition to review of its substance... rezoned by that time, which we all know has procedures in addition to review of its substance, then that application would have the right to be heard by the planning board. And I don't, now I know especially that I don't have control over exactly how long it'll take because we've, we've chosen, again, we discussed a while back about that the master plan was, was very important, however, it was told to me that we already had the comprehensive planning done for the new B3. And we went ahead and did that appropriately. Going beyond that, we do not have a basis of our foundation of comprehensive planning. Now we have to do that. I guess what I'm getting at is instead of adopt, doing a master plan and adopting the zoning like we all would have liked to have done, now we're doing it where we're going through the process, which is pretty, it's pretty tiring to go through these, these processes and keep in mind the, the times.
If it's all right with you, I'm going to do what Tom suggested, and then I will vote for the moratorium.
I don't know if I could vote for it.
Then I'll vote no, and that'll take care of the moratorium. The, the choice.
By the way, in some ways, I have found that.
I mean, do we want to allow the R1 to be built upon as an R1?
I'd rather have it as R1 than a mixed use.
I'd rather have it as R1 than mixed use as well, but that's a separate, that's a separate conversation.
Right.
I'm, I'm gonna suggest that, one, the builder can't start building on it tomorrow.
Right.
The builder can build on it until there's a, a proposal to the planning board that goes through all of the.
So applications could be submitted.
Yeah, the application could be presented, yes.
But by taking it out, you also give your planner the opportunity to have a discussion, which he has had some, and I understand they can be very amicable.
Yes.
Okay. Discussion before anything is submitted.
But I think those discussions can be had regardless.
Not with the moratorium.
Absolutely with the moratorium because the discussions can be had.
Do it, I'm voting no, that'll take care of it. And then you don't have a moratorium.
I think a very reasonable alternative for us here, you know.
I tried to offer a compromise, and if you don't want it, that's fine.
So if this isn't, if we don't vote on this tonight, there's still time before the moratorium expires.
Not to go through all of the procedures.
There would be a gap.
Okay.
You would be, you would hit tonight.
Really, realistically, we should vote on this today.
What are your thoughts?
Well, I was speaking with Katie about this earlier and kind of with some suggestion from Joe, correct? In terms of the timing? And one, one thing that we discussed was potentially setting a special meeting.
Actually, let me bring up the attorney's email before I, I don't want to misquote anybody.
A special meeting isn't gonna make a difference.
Let's see what she says.
Do you still need me to vote yes?
No, actually, if we had a special meeting when the, when the mayor was here.
If we had, we need four of them. And I think.
By the way, I, I am not entirely certain that we're gonna get a recommendation from the planning board that's favorable. My sense.
That's right.
My sense from the planning board was that there was significant skepticism. If, I don't, I don't know, I don't want to say opposition. Although, at least one member of the planning board said, "I am opposed in general to moratorium."
Tiffany, mayor, if you'd like to come over and look at.
And we should, we should feel free to, to at least reference what occurred during the discussion of it. And of course, they chose to, to put it off to the next. But indeed, I was asked about it, the justification for it, when it might end, and of course, the planning board members also understand that moratorium must be limited in time. The courts may have allowed them, may allow them to go a little bit further in terms of time, but first of all, I don't want to be in a position of setting the record for the longest moratorium. That's hardly a, a good thing for a planner or a municipality.
Last week, we called, we had the hearing on the original moratorium. Number of people in the audience who said, and then you're just going to extend it.
That's correct. And that's really kind of funny.
Would it satisfy you if we changed the terms of the moratorium, embedded three-month moratorium? No, no, okay. Just checking.
I, I believe this board made a.
I understand, and I appreciate your position.
And I intend to stick with it.
What was your comment?
We, before Kurt was even harder, when we first became members of this board, all of us met with people in the B3 and with the annexed property. And we assured both of them they would be priority components. And then, if people wanted to have a moratorium, the moratorium was proposed, and all of a sudden, our promise was negated. And I don't approve of that. Don't, I mean, I've offered a compromise.
You know, I, I just don't feel like our promise was negated. I feel like it just takes a long time and longer than we had anticipated to do these things. The B3 we should have had done sooner.
And we had, either we compromise or we don't, and it's up to you, I don't care. I'm happy to support the moratorium if we do what we said we would do.
I mean.
No, if we go ahead with the mor, with the extension, is there anything against us withdrawing it at some point?
We can, we can terminate it before it's time.
Okay.
Was, was the other things that you were taking?
I should, lifting it, which is what we talked about with the B3, to continue to do that, actually, again, what we're talking about is an incredibly complex and not recommendable process. It would be endless discussions of process and procedure rather than substance and referrals and waiting and filing local laws with the Department of State and waiting for 30 days or so to get it. It, it really is, now that we've accomplished the rezoning of, of the lands for which we had a very good foundation for, for the action the village board took, now we've come to a point where there needs to be comprehensive planning as a foundation for, for virtually every other rezoning action.
So what does that mean?
That means that I recommend that we really commence the, the master plan process in earnest. And then the decision is if, if we're, if, if the board is, is simply dissatisfied with what the R1 would permit on the annexed property, then I would use my own judgment and bring forth a recommendation very quickly. And it would, and I can tell you that it would not recommend a transformation such as introducing mixed uses to that area. It would, it wouldn't be urban, it wouldn't be suburban sprawl, but it's not going to be introducing commercial uses to, to that neighborhood. I think it's established, and I haven't heard from the residents in that neighborhood, but we will eventually. And again, I think Main Street is a stone's throw away, and there's plenty of opportunities for redevelopment and infill development along with existing development on, on Main Street. And of course, the B3 is now another avenue, literally and figuratively speaking, for, for mixed use, for, for a little bit of mid-rise height. There's a lot of opportunities there. It's hard for me to imagine recommending that Henry W. DuBois Drive become a corridor for, for a lot of commercial development.
So realistically, you know, if we, if, since you seem to have some thoughts about this and how we'd move forward with it, realistically, how soon do you think you could create that kind of proposal? Because I know, I mean, you know, I know that there are other things that are on the top there, so.
There are, and, and some of them are not always that predictable. But, but I can say this, having had this discussion, which I'm very, I feel fortunate to have had, in other words, that the, the legislation I bring forward would be, in my best judgment, in that case, I would suggest that that could be the, the first meeting in, in September, there could be, because again, it narrows down the scope of, of what the rezoning would be and makes it a lot more practical.
Okay. All right. Let's go with Tom's suggestion, Sally's compromise.
Let's make your motion.
All right, I move that the village board extend a mor, the moratorium that was passed when, in.
In March of 2013.
March, in March of 2013, for development projects that would come before the planning board, with the exception that the NIFIN extension, so we call it annexation, be, that proposals for development of the NIFIN annexation be permitted in the period after the initial moratorium is concluded, and if we want to say, given all the requirements of the planning board and so forth, so.
Second.
And that's okay.
Yes, I would amend, I'm sorry, actually.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Sorry, we're gonna have to set a public hearing for that.
Sure.
Want to set a public hearing for this? For what? For the annexation?
Well, the amendment that we just undertook, in other words, to, that, it is substantive, and I think it does require, it does require a public hearing substantive.
The extension?
The 28th.
What we did by removing this, it changes what was proposed enough that we can't call it a, a very minor change, so.
But isn't, don't, I, I mean, I don't know the real legal legality of this, but isn't it more of a substantive change, making something more stringent? Please, will we need to reset a public hearing on, and because we're making it less stringent, we may not?
You know, I think, I, I definitely see the logic in that. And, and while the planning, planning laws don't always follow logically, I, I think that I'm, I'm happy to, to allow by the board, the board wishes in this case.
They did not say, that they didn't recommend it, and they said specifically, if the board wishes to extend it, it must be by super majority.
That's right, they've already, the county has already exercised their.
So we don't need a second hearing.
Disapproved, which they tend to use rather sparingly, for cases like extending moratoriums.
Okay.
So yeah, so they can't.
Does that make sense to you?
I'm sorry, I, yeah, I feel like, what the, what the county did by disapproving.
I mean, I don't wanna, I don't want it to say, let's not have a public hearing because I believe this to be true.
What do you turn?
Right, but then what do we do tonight to set a public hearing or not?
I would, I wouldn't set a public hearing until, do you affirm me?
Because we have to set a public hearing at a meeting.
You could have an emergency.
You didn't want to set a, the public hearing on the legislation, you wanted to see the legislation before you set the public hearing.
Do you want me to take two seconds and see if I can get ahold of Joe Aronoff?
Very good idea. And while she's doing that, I was going to ask for a second session, but I think I can do it without, because I think I know the answer. Do you have anything that you want to add to the negotiation list?
Oh, I don't think so.
Okay.
I looked and I, I did not.
All right, then we don't need your second session.
All right, cool. As a reminder to the two of you, our second meeting is next Wednesday for the contact negotiations.
Ellen asked me.
Hi, Joe, it's Kate Booker. I'm sitting at the board table with the cameras on.
So when I put it on my calendar.
The board is considering extending the moratorium for the interim zoning. Would they or would they not need to have a second public hearing if they extended the I'm actually gonna hand the phone to Kurt to give you the most accurate answer to that question. Joe wants to know what changed, specifically the changes, and I don't, although I could pair it back to him, I would want it.
Wise woman.
The board is interested in removing the newly annexed property of H.W. DuBois Drive, but otherwise it would be, the, the, the law would be unchecked.
Is there anything on your boxes?
They'd like it to not fall in when it is, when it is extended.
Oh, I better get on. Love the way I do these things. Find out if it's a funny detective.
Maybe, excuse me, I'll just, can you just close the door?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just had, like, too many Mondays.
Yeah, we need some sleep.
I know, yeah, work, work, it's just, finally finished. The board's started working on this, right?
Oh, good.
Well, other zoning districts are, and they were, they're the same zoning districts that were existed from the beginning in the initial six-month period, with the exception of we, we no longer are, are prohibiting applications within the New North Chas, not Gately District, U. B. Fair, yes.
Getting a little.
That's the only, that's the only, well, as written, it was.
Do you want me to take the extra footage? The village attorney probably will be traveling.
I don't know if they have, they're happy to return it, but.
Oh, you know what, now, you know what? That's an important distinction, isn't it? In what I, yes, that's an important distinction. Actually, you know what, that, that probably requires a little bit of discussion and kind of, to, to contemplate that.
One of them I didn't get.
This is a legitimate information. I still haven't heard that from D.C., although I called it again about no gas production in New York State. Of course, as you know, New York State has.
Right, and actually, I do, I think the board, I can appreciate that. And actually, I, I guess I haven't come across before, now that you mentioned it, exempting a particular piece of property from a district that is otherwise in the moratorium, but that's something we didn't touch, you know what?
I'm shocked.
Are you shocked?
We couldn't do it last time.
Couldn't do what?
Because we are, we are a significant producer of natural gas without that.
What is that gas though? Right.
Well, getting it from, and, and maybe being exported.
I thank you.
Probably a combination.
Okay.
I thought I remembered it from last time, I didn't want to be bad.
No, actually, there's, there's another point, I haven't encountered this before, and we really, well, we put you on the spot. I haven't encountered this before, what we're doing is we're, and Sally, I think you said you had asked this, I didn't pick up on it moments ago, what we're doing is we're taking a piece of property out of a district that we're otherwise prohibiting applications from being processed in. I haven't come across that before.
Meaning that this property is not its own?
It's newly annexed, but of course, we assigned it a zoning district of R1, so now.
Meaning that other R1s owning districts, even if it's not adjacent? Why is this exempted, is it not?
Well, it is, it is exempt. In other words, we're not treating all, all of that district alike, and I simply haven't come across that before.
We did treat it differently because we assigned it a holding pattern, which said it was different.
I do understand that. I just, now, actually, Joe thought that.
I'm just asking for clarification, I don't know.
If I might, if I might, just, you know, summarize what Joe said, I think he thought if, if we express our reasoning for doing so, as best he could tell from, from the conversation on the telephone, he thought it, it could be justified. I simply haven't come across a moratorium that treated properties with the same zoning designation differently in a moratorium. I haven't come across that before, but Joe, he did understand the, the issue, and he reminded, and that was the point that Sally was trying to make, that I didn't quite pick up on before.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, he believes it can be done for, for the right reasons.
We haven't had a hearing.
Yes.
We did, okay.
And I think also, a way that we could make it distinct, even though it's all R1, is the idea that the other R1 zoning districts are already developed.
Established.
They're already established, and anything being, anything being built there would be, would truly be infill, and perhaps too much so, whereas this area is adjacent to. and perhaps too much so, whereas this area is adjacent to a undeveloped property.
We specifically said that until such time as it could be addressed, we would put it in a holding position of R1. So I think we...
I'm still not completely comfortable with this, that I'm going to compromise.
And I compromise.
I know you're not completely comfortable with it either, so I appreciate that.
So we can set a public hearing for the next meeting, the 28th?
Immediately following the first public hearing. If you have the legislation, you can set the public hearing immediately following the first public hearing.
But we need to move it, can we?
No, you couldn't have it that quick. We're not having another public hearing, are we?
We are having another public hearing that night.
On what? We didn't set any of those public hearings.
Wait, wait, wait. Can I tell you?
It's because we didn't have the one that we're going to have tonight.
We set a public hearing on the 28th. I'm just looking for which one it is. It's in the minutes from the last meeting. I believe.
I thought we were going to do that, and we were told, "No, you don't need to because you..."
It wasn't done tonight, though.
No. It is regarding environmental.
The policy board.
Right. Mayor West moved to set the public hearing on this law for Wednesday, August 28th at 7:30. Trustee Rhodes seconded. Five ayes. Motion carried. I believe we were allowed to set the public hearing because you had ironed out what the new law was going to be. Joe was the person standing...
And what was... What time is that?
7:30.
7:30.
But Katie, we do not have that piece of legislation. We did a lot of amending. Rebecca had suggestions. I had suggestions. Tom had suggestions. That is not ready yet.
I would like to see that before we're at the public hearing stage. But I also think... But I mean, you know, are we changing that right now?
Well, I think we have to because we don't have... I think Rebecca made a very good point earlier to me. Not to set a public hearing till we have an actual legislation looked at by us before we have the hearing.
We approved the amendments, but we haven't seen the final draft.
No.
That's very true.
Well, and I, you know, not to be too nitpicky here, but I do think there is a difference between having had a draft and making changes and then not having the final draft versus not having any draft at all. There is a difference between those two. You would like to see this before we're at a public hearing stage.
For the environmental, I thought we were going to. I thought we were going to have it tonight.
That's true. I thought we were going to have it tonight.
I thought we were going to have it tonight to just look at together and make sure that everything everybody suggested.
Well, you know what? Why don't we leave it as is? Because we can still get it before then, and we can all look at it and make any, you know, check against our own changes.
I mean, I was very satisfied with our amendment.
So was I. And then, which is why I think we set the public hearing. But if anything is not included and we have the public hearing, we can still change it and not vote on it that night.
Good point. As long as we don't change it dramatically.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Dramatically or...
Dramatically.
Well, we might have to change it dramatically. That's given.
And also, if we... If there are things that we felt were really not displayed the way we wanted to, we can extend the public hearing, make the changes, and then, you know. So, yeah.
Okay, so we want to set this public hearing for...
I would... It would be my suggestion to set the second public hearing immediately following the first public hearing. That way you wouldn't have a time delay.
Like tonight.
We need so many days to do this, Katie.
I would have to notice the public hearing by next Wednesday, which means we would have to have a copy of the law. But since the law is not that far off from the law that we currently have, I'm sure it can be edited. I'm assuming, and if I'm overstepping my bounds, please forgive me, I would guess that you could physically have a law available for us to notice the public hearing by next Wednesday. But if I'm overstepping my bounds, Kurt, by all means, I don't want to.
Actually, I wasn't making the amendments to the new constitution of the environmental conservation.
No, no, no. We're talking about the...
Sorry. No, I can... No, this I can make very quickly. Yeah.
You know, you're saved from that one. I'm going to try and put that together myself.
Let's set a public hearing for 7:35.
Or not.
Immediately following.
Immediately.
So if it took you a minute to finish, you could...
Yes.
I'm not going to be here at the next meeting. I announced that earlier. And I'm not going to be back until...
The following week?
Yeah. I'll be back for the 11th. I'll be back before that. Okay.
The first meeting, I'm sorry, is the 11th of September.
And then we're having a special meeting on the eighth of water meeting.
So someone actually needs to move to have the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to set the public hearing for August 28th, immediately following the other public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to move to a...
I'd like to second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Not bad. Not bad at all.
I'm tired. Very good. There's a lot to cover. A lot of...
A lot of public comments.